All right, with the hour being after seven, we have a quorum. We'll open the meeting. First item, minutes, July 20th. Do we have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Motion to a second.
Second.
Second for John. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. All right. Next one. First item up. Unless we got some other stuff here. Mr. Marinie, we'll do you now, so you're hanging out. See, I am a nice guy after all these years, huh? Now, I can't see you sitting around. We got a bunch of other stuff and it doesn't make sense. Now, we're supposed to sign some papers or something?
Yes.
We all set, Kyle?
Mike Corry, for Mr. Marinie.
I'm sorry.
How are you? We submitted, as I understand it, the board has reviewed and approved the plans submitted by Glossa Engineering. We provided a covenant of easements and utilities, an operating plan, a landscaping covenant, and a Form F covenant. We submitted them to Ms. Delaney and Mr. Valdef. Hopefully, they're acceptable to you guys.
I know. Kyle, you looked at them?
Yes.
All right. I know with you, I could ask all questions. Are they acceptable?
Yes. I'll note that there were two, let me thumb through the, if you recall, Mr. Chairman, there was a landscape covenant and whatnot. There was some unusual documents here. There were two landscape covenants. One listed two entities as party and one listed three entities. It's the three entity landscape covenant that you should be approving.
Okay. How many do we have here? Two?
There were two when the information submitted to Kate. So both landscape covenants were there. I believe one was an earlier version.
That's right, Mr. Valdef. We had originally drafted the landscape covenant for two abutters, to be signed by two abutters. One, Ms. Molko, and the condominium existing in front of the Marion Street Extension property. In consultation with Mr. Valdef, we also added Stephen and Michelle Lynch
Yep.
as parties to enforce.
Okay. Yeah, I see that. We have Ann, as you said, Steve Lynch. Can't pronounce the F E M. How do you pronounce that name?
I think it's Homolco.
Yes.
Yeah. And, okay, and Sandy and Bill.
They're trustees of the condo.
Okay.
What we wanted to do is to get boards okay on the form and then we'll go and get their signatures as parties able to enforce.
From what Kyle has said, everything seems fine, right, Kyle?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll make the first motion to accept the operation maintenance plan covenant. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Phil. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. That one's all set. We have declaration of landscaping covenant. And I'll make a motion to accept that for Marion Street. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Phil. Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Third, final covenant is easements and utilities for Marion Street Extension. And I'll make a motion to accept that.
Second.
Second from Paul. All in favor?
Aye.
So you're all set to go with those?
Mr. Chairman, did you do the Form F?
Not yet. We will.
Okay.
That will be next, and then we'll sign. All right. The problem with Form F, Kyle, you all set?
All set.
All right. Make a motion to release the Form, to accept, I'm sorry, the Form F covenant. Do I have a second? Second from John. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. So we're off and running and the plans you said are fine, Kyle?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion to endorse the finished subdivision plan Marion Street.
Second.
A second from Kate. Can I just figure out who's going first?
We're taking two.
Yeah, I know. Okay. Okay. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. All right. So if we got the pens?
Yep, right here.
We'll get her out and get it done. Of course, I don't know the date of the approval.
Fill that in.
Do you fill it in? By assigning detail sheets. Oh, we missed one. Yay!
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, unlike the old days where we used to do just the standard detail sheets, these are kind of customized now, so I'd have to work on that.
All right. So he gets all of these, right, Kate?
I'll give them to him after I fill everything in so he can fix them.
No, the covenants. Oh, you're gonna fill them in? Okay.
So he can hope on Tuesday.
What?
Tuesday.
What's Tuesday? Whenever it rains.
Is that right?
If it rains Monday?
There's no dates.
Maybe it'll be Wednesday.
Nothing has to do with when someone comes back. All right. As soon as we get done with that, as we're sitting here, we'll do Marion Street. And we have, while we're sitting here while they're signing, we can do something else before we get onto the hearings. Garden Path Bond?
That's making.
What? Oh, okay.
I'm seeing you daily with Mackie. Mackie represents Garden Path Estates.
Yeah, okay. So we got the bond?
Yep. I am here on a vote for a tripartite agreement for my release of covenant and for J. Convenance of easements and utilities.
All right. Last meeting, we've set the bond and closed him. Three, what was it, three seven?
It's 358, I think.
Yeah.
It's 358.
Okay.
Yep, 358.
I'm confused where it say on here. Oh, there it is.
It's the second page.
Yeah, I got it. Okay, okay. I'll make a motion to accept the tripartite, the amount of 358,000, with one local bank and Leonardo Silvia for Garden Path.
Second.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Pass this one this way because we sign this. Whoops. And we can release the Form I.
Oh, wait. I'm sorry, release.
I don't think you don't have a standard sheet.
Okay. I'll make a motion to release the Form I covenant. The lots one through six.
Second.
Do I have a second? Kate, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained. This one's an easy one. Do you think you know where to sign it?
I can figure it out.
Are you sure? And I'll make a motion to accept Form J, convenience of easements and utilities. We don't have to sign that, so I have that as a motion.
Second.
Second from Phil. All in favor? Do you need this one back too, Kate, after we sign them all?
Actually, Nadine's gonna take them all.
Okay.
She's gonna bring them back to me.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I just ask you for the Form I, release of covenant, when you're signing, is this, of your free act, indeed, does I have to notarize it?
Oh, okay, that's right. Well, I don't get paid, so it has to be free. You don't want to ask about my act. Yes, that's right. I keep forgetting. Phil used to do this all the time. Yes.
You're so polite.
Thank you.
All right. So one, two, three, and that's it, right?
Well, Freiberger, Nadine's second.
And she, you got them all back, right?
I always like to.
Yes, sir.
Oh, you only have them by two. Only two. You want them back?
Yep. Thank you.
All right. And are you doing Freiberger tonight?
I am, yes.
Do you have it all stamped?
Yes.
Okay. We'll hit this one quick, too. Just an acceptance of, or endorsement, acceptance of Form F. Okay. Did they put the stamp on it, do you know?
I believe so. This had it, yeah.
This came in? Abby Campbell? Huh?
I didn't see it.
Well, do we have a Form F?
I have the original, sorry.
Okay. We got Form F, we got easements and utilities. Okay. I'll make a motion to accept the maintenance and agreement for Bruins Way.
Second.
Do I have a second? About to sign, so all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's done. Private Way Covenant. Make a motion to accept the private covenant. Michael and Diane Freiberger at 965 West Street.
I'll second.
Do I have a second from Paul? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained. This is the one we signed. And what are we doing with Form F, Kate? We're accepting. I want to get my macho on. It's accepting Form F?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. All right. Make a motion to accept the Form F covenant. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Phil. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Now, that all done, now we can sign the plan. Make a, Kyle, I know you've had this a while, so you said it's all set, right?
It's all set, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Make a motion to endorse a plan of land for Bruins Way, 965 West Street. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Kate. All in favor?
Aye.
All there's a lot of stuff there. We're gonna have to get the dates later to put on.
You didn't see a signature just about on those last few pages.
So you want these back, Kate? Freiberger. All stuffed and. While we're doing what? You give me the marijuana one first, because that one's the simpler.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I just have to ask again on the private way covenant, if you signed it and your free act deed, okay?
Yes, free act deed. Even on the private, huh?
You're trying to sign that.
With the hour being after 7:00 PM on August 17th, we have a public hearing for amended schedule use regulations, Table 5B14, Section 5H and 14, in order to amend the requirements for medical marijuana treatment and establish requirements for marijuana establishments. Okay? And it's a private petition and it's gonna be hard to, Mr. Calara, is that how you pronounce it? And it's a private petition from him and what he has asked, that we had to open it and he'd like to continue without testimony because he is not going to be able to make it tonight. And without him here, we can't really do much. And he wants to continue until September 21st. And he's gonna give us an extension until September 30th, 2023. So anybody here for marijuana, it's not going through tonight. So first thing is make a motion to grant the extension through September 30th?
Second.
Second from Phil. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, for the extension. And we got a time on the 21st, Kate?
Yeah, I already put it on there for 7:01.
All right. This will be continued to 7:01 PM on September 21st. And at that time, we'll be opened, I mean, open, open as opposed to open to continue. Okay? So anybody here for that? We'll do that later in another month. And I want to wait till everybody's done signing because we'll be fed. All of us trying All right, we can do the other one, Kate. It's at 7:20. We'll just take it out of.
The other article?
The one that's, yeah. No, not the other article. 104 Main. Rather than leave people sitting here or watching or whatever. All right. For the hour being for the town clock after 7:20, we got a case number 2305 site plan for 104 Main Street. And we have from the applicant is, we are opening it to continue. So we have now opened it and the applicant has asked that they are still working through a special permit process and they felt it's premature to open it on the 17th, so they requested continuance to the next available hearing. In addition, we were gonna give it some extension through October 31st, 2023. So we have opened it to continue. I'll make a motion to grant it through October 31st?
Second.
A second from Kate. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed, abstained. And do we have a time on?
The 21st, there's like seven hearings on there, so could we push it to October 5th at 7:10?
Okay. All right. And this public hearing for 104 Main Street parking expansion will be continued till October 5th, 2023. And what time? Seven what?
10.
7:10. All right. So there'll be no notice. It just would continue it, so it.
What's the date again?
Uh, October 5th. Our first meeting in October. And we're almost done signing.
I need to show it to Nate.
I don't give me the other one, Kate. Is it done?
It's a formality of cancer.
It's the second notice.
It's great.
So this is the medical, this marijuana one.
It's the second, no, see the second bullet on the front?
Yeah, but, oh, there it is. I'm sorry. Yep. I'm wondering when you, that's all done, so do all right.
Do we have a new zoning bylaw beyond May 6th, 2019?
No, they want, yeah, they, I don't.
Kate, is the May 2019 the latest one still?
No.
It's the latest one. You updated?
Updated. Am I updating?
Oh, no. No. Was that the last one? Remember, we had a difference between us and the zoning board. There was a, there was one, I think, on the 20.
Yeah, I think it's like October.
2021. Yeah. So it's gonna be updated by, I think, Patrick Duchene.
Because I'm just looking at this, that doesn't match to this.
What, five?
5B13Q. That's not what it says in here.
I looked that up today. On my computer, it seemed to be.
This is for the updated version, John.
Right. Yeah, but what John's saying is.
5B13Q isn't about this item.
That's the date of yours, Phil, first page. We got it.
May 6th.
Isn't it online?
5B13Q out here is about, you should look in business, business as a whole, it has to do with outdoor dining. So that's not the right.
You go one, copy there.
I don't.
It's like a nine.
Read. Let me see, John, what you're looking at.
Look at that. 5B13Q.
Oh, that's, oh, come on, I'm sorry.
That is missing.
No, it's a check.
See, this is all section three. I'm sorry, that's four. My mistake.
All right, yeah.
Q. Okay, there it is.
Yep.
My mistake?
So you're all set, signed?
All right. All set? Okay. All set here. With the hour being after 7 o'clock, we have a public hearing for a chapter, Mass General laws, Chapter 48, Section 5. Landy Board will hold a public hearing on August 17th at 7:00 PM. And for this particular article, it's amended schedule use regulations 5B13Q in order to clarify requirements for garaging and maintaining house trailers, motorhomes, recreational vehicles.
Here's what I found. Sorry about that.
I hate Siri. She won't even talk to me anymore. I'm sorry. And it's petition of Michael Kirby. And is Michael Kirby here? Okay, come up and explain. And do you understand the process, how this goes?
I believe I do. This is the first time I've been to a planning board meeting.
Okay, well, the whole Mass General law in Massachusetts. Yeah, okay. You can, you private petition, selectmen, us zoning board can petition to change the zoning. And we have, the selectmen's got 14 days to give it to us and we have to do it within 65 days. We hold a public hearing for this. And we're already a recommendation board and it goes to the town meeting for them to vote on. They do go through finance committee. I just want to explain it to you and anybody else watching so they understand the whole process. But we're basically the sounding board for you and anybody who favor or against it. So we have to hold a public hearing. So that's why we're here. So if you'd like to explain?
Okay. By way of introduction, my name is Michael Kirby. I've been a Walpole resident for roughly 40 years. My wife is a multi-generation resident of Walpole and we're currently residing in her parents' home that was built in 1966. During the 40 years that I've been here, we've owned three different properties. And over the past 30 or so years, we've always, we've had RV or a camper of some sort on our property for that amount of time. And I never realized that there was any restriction until one day in May, Mr. Crowley showed up at my door and informed me that I had one month to remove the camper from my property. I was, quite honestly, quite surprised, to say the least, by that. And then he, subsequent to that, he pointed me to this Article Q and the description of it. I have to say that when I read it, and to this day, when I read it, I still don't think there's anything wrong with having an RV. But as Mr. Crowley explained to me, he's the authority and he's the enforcer of this. So I sat with him and he was very gracious in helping me when I tried to reword this in a manner that was much clearer and simpler, to simply remove that one-month restriction from an RV, for an RV being parked on your property. Just briefly, finally, in preparation for this, I examined the zoning and schedule of use tables in 23 surrounding towns. I went too deep. And I have a summary of that if I could just present it to you because it's kind of the basis of.
Thank you.
I have the other copies here. And so I wanted to do a lot of research and try and understand and get to the root of why this type of restriction made sense. And if common sense is the term I'd like to use, I don't think it makes a lot of common sense to have a one-month restriction for a recreational vehicle for a number of reasons. I can explain those if anybody wants to hear them. But what I did is I went to the 23 towns and of the 23 towns, when I searched their zoning laws, there were 12 towns that I couldn't find any reference to a restriction on RVs. The other 11 had some restrictions, but none of them were a requirement where you couldn't have your RV on your property for more than one month. And I guess with that, I would open it up to questions. I just want to say I appreciate Mr. Crowley's and Patrick Duchene's help when I reworded this to simplify it. I showed it to both of them and they seemed to think that this modification, simplification, would remove that one-month restriction. I'll open up any questions or comments that you might have.
Okay. Do we have any questions, comments from any of the boards, Kate? We have nothing. Nobody wanted to answer you within the town hall, so is there anybody here who wants to speak for or against it before we open up? No? Okay. All right. I'll start with John. Do you have any questions or comments?
Well, when I first looked at it, seeing the differences made, I was curious what real difference there was between the three that had been accepted exempted and the other ones there. And I noticed the fact is these are all objects that could potentially become a second house. It's not looked at properly. Now, I know there's other people, I've seen RVs and stuff, motor, and the trailers in other people's yards, so I know it happens, yeah. But that's the only point I can see where they might have, why they might have wanted the exception. In a way, it's allowing a potential second house on a lot. I'm not sure what the original reasoning might have been when they wrote the existing
Yes.
You know, I can think of this slight rewording maybe saying that parking is not an issue, actually occupying it for more than like a one-month period would be an issue. Some minor rewording maybe could be done to clarify that you're not using it as a second house. You're just parking it there for future use, which is what I would assume that it is in most cases, yeah.
Exactly. And part of the reason I did the research, and there are some towns that have requirements like that, but the requirement is that you cannot reside in it for more than a period of time, either 30 days.
Yes, exactly.
Nida has an excellent explanation. And, you know, they even make exceptions in case of, you know, if something's wrong with your primary.
Makes sense.
House, things of that nature. But again, I certainly can appreciate that. And in my discussions with Mr. Crowley, we talked about that. And he said, well, clearly, there's no ability for anybody to live in an RV. And I believe, you know, he's here tonight. He explained to me that that's covered in other areas of the zoning law. I don't want to misquote you, Jim, but.
Sure. Mr. Crowley, could you explain the items he's speaking of then?
Yeah, thank you. Jim Crowley, building commissioner. What Mr. Kirby's relating to is, it's a standard zoning. It's a single-family zone. So if you're an R A G or R A R B rural, that's a single-family home. If you put an RV and start living in it, now you've created a two-family situation. So you're not allowed to live in it. So our already-existing zoning covers the side of you, someone staying at, even for up to thirty days, it wouldn't be allowed because you're creating a second living area. So our underlying zoning already covers that. The only way under mass law or building code that allows you to stay in an RV is if you had a natural disaster, either a fire or a storm damaged your house, you're allowed to live in an RV up to a year while your house is being rebuilt. And that's the only reason you're allowed to live in an RV on a residential area. Otherwise, you're creating a, a non-conforming use by making it a two-family instead of being a single-family home.
How would that apply in GR where you can have two families?
So GR, you would actually have to come in front of you for the special permit under the planning board to apply for, same as if you're doing a second house on a lot, you'd have to come before zoning and the planning board to create a second unit. So if you were to live in your RV in a GR zone, you're going to have to meet the criteria of over fifteen thousand square feet and come before the boards to be allowed to live there.
So does your opinion that there are sufficient safeguards in the zoning bylaw to prevent it, the, all the new proposed use regulation from being abused?
Yes. So the, again, Mr. Kirby, I believe, just wanted to make it more simplified, that he can actually keep his RV at his home.
Yeah.
And we already don't allow people to live in it. And probably in the last five or six years, we've sent violations of people living in RVs and had them removed out of them as part of being single-family homes. So we already enforce that side of it if we get complaints.
Thank you. Covers me, I think, yeah.
You all set? Okay. Phil?
Actually, I have one more question for Mr. Crowley. And that is, if, if somebody had the RV and someone was like on vacation, visiting, could they live in it like for five days? Or that would be prohibited too?
So again, it's like if you have your family over and you exceed the parking number of cars on a vacation, we're a complaint-based driven department. So if someone's there for five days and no one complains, we're not driving around looking for it. So that's kind of one of those gray areas. Same with if your family's there and they bring their car, and now they've exceeded the number of cars, we're not going to go out there and tell them to have to move their car. Technically, if that was the case, they could just move the RV onto the street. And they're not in the violation of our zoning for those five days. So that, we don't go that stringent on it.
I think it's a good change, by the way. It does seem like reasonable that if someone owned an RV to allow them to park it in their, their yard for, you know, the time when they're, they're not using it, which might be most of the year. So, thank you. Kate?
So I haven't had a chance to absorb this all. Thank you for providing it, though. My question is, did you, when you researched it, did you come upon any towns that restrict how close you can be to your neighbors? So there's a buffer?
Yeah, there, there is a number that do have that in there as a buffer. I can't remember which towns.
I think Needham had something I just wanted to say.
Yeah, Needham. And I think Needham's was interesting because if you know Needham, there are a lot of smaller lots, they had a certain.
Not near than five feet from any lot line.
Well, Midfield has it, Millis has it. A bunch of them have it.
And if we make this change, we don't have anything like that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I'm all set.
Okay. Paul?
Mr. Kirby, let me ask you something. How big is your RV currently?
Twenty-four and a half feet.
Twenty-four and a half. All right. So you do exceed this fifteen feet?
Yes.
I mean, would you agree that this is, I, I mean, personally, just reading this is, it's very ambiguous. It's, it, I mean, I, you know, I mean, yes, it says recreation trailers. But I mean, I, I, I mean, I, I mean, I'm looking, I'm looking at all these other towns and how they write it. And then I look at our town of Walpole, and it's.
The existing one.
The existing, right. Yeah. Not your change, it's just kind of, you know, seeing through what you, you know, and I don't know, I just.
Yeah.
It leaves you scratching your head.
It does. It does. I showed this to a number of people, including, everyone scratched their head in front of that because it is confusing. I think there's three parts to that statement. When I read it, I read it as this is referring to trailers and semi-trailers over fifteen feet. And it would make sense if you couldn't have a forty-foot semi-trailer on your property. And if you did, then it would be one month you'd have to get rid of it. The except clauses were, Mr. Crowley, he's familiar with the laws, is that usually except, that means everything after the statement is, is excluded from this. So that's why in his interpretation, motor homes, auto homes, et cetera, are not allowed for more than one month. But in fact, the large semi-trailers are allowed. Again, don't let me misquote you here. You're the expert.
No, so the way it's written, I don't know how long it's been in the zoning town of Walpole, but the way it's written is literally any trailer over fifteen feet or greater is allowed on property.
Is allowed.
Anything less than fifteen feet is not allowed, which is kind of odd for residential home, that if you have a small trailer for a lawnmower for taking trash or leaves to the dump, technically it's not allowed in residential, which is kind of odd. The way it is written and has been in effect is if it's more than fifteen feet in length, it is allowed. When it comes to recreational vehicles, we actually don't have a definition in our definitions of what exactly that is. Mass General Law doesn't have one either. They have it on trailers, semi-trailers, motor vehicles, but not really under RVs or recreational vehicles. So I would have to defer back to whenever this article was written.
Sure.
To see what they really meant by it.
Mass laws do define an auto home. They don't define an RV, a recreational vehicle. But in their laws, they do make references to RVs as that's what they mean when they say an RV is an auto home. That's their definition.
But I mean, I, you just, you, in my head, I just tried to say, what is, what is the town of Walpole's fear, right? That, you know, people will put RVs or like trailers so you can increase your living space without paying additional time. I mean, I, right? I mean, I was saying, what's the pink elephant in the room here? It's, it's that. It's, we're afraid that it's people are going to live in that. So, you know, but, but when you read this, it says nothing that we fear, that you can't live in it or things like this, you know? So. I, I have no further questions, but thank you.
All right. The way I read it is very simple. First off, you've got to understand it's in the residential section. It's not in the business or the industrial or the limited manufacturer. So it's specific to residential. Also, you're allowed, it says the garage and maintaining of a trailer, semi-trailer is defined in chapter ninety, more than fifteen feet in length. And that's where it says it's allowed in what business, CB, whatever it is, I don't get the original. They're telling you where it's allowed. So you can do that, okay? But what they're telling, but you can't garage those in the residential because it's, it's not allowed. So that's, they've said that. They've already corrected. So you can't do a trailer. But they went on further to say that house trailers, motor homes, and recreational vehicles aren't allowed except for one month in a consecutive twelve-month period. So that's how they define it. So to me, I, it reads fine because you've got to remember, you're looking at residential, and you've got to show that, that is, and then it's a residential section, five B one three Q. So that's what, why it reads like that. So that's probably one of the reasons they have it. And the other thing is I'm looking through some of these other people here. I mean, not to be, if you go through it, is, as I see some of them, they don't say anything. Dover, Sherbin, Wellesley, I don't think anybody, those people have houses on their tucket. They don't have RVs, right? So that's pretty much, you look at all the, if you could find me one, an RV on someone's house in Dover, I'll be amazed, right? So I can understand that. A lot of them make sense where they tell you, they don't want the setbacks any worse than the law, which makes sense. One of the things I have an issue with is if, if you park it behind, beside your garage, and you, you got the fifteen-foot side yard and it's ten feet wide, you don't see it, but your neighbor gets full bore of that. So. But you do get to park it on the street. So what is the issue with, on the street? You, we haven't exempted, we haven't disallowed you from having it on the street. What is, so.
Well, that's, that's a good point. And after Mr. Crowley came, I did put it on the street. I live on John Turco Drive. It's a fairly wide street, but by the same token, there are a number of other cars that are on the street, and there's an awful lot of traffic that goes up and down. So my neighbors seemingly were annoyed that it was on the street, much more than they were when it was in the yard, other than perhaps one neighbor. And then, from a personal standpoint, it's a very expensive vehicle, and do you really want it exposed on the street to traffic that can drive by or anybody can come and nick it? When I did park it, I made a point of putting my other older vehicle behind it, just in case if somebody did bump into it, they would hit my two thousand and eight Camry and not the twenty-twenty-one RV that we own. So it's, it's more of a safety thing, and I think it's more of a danger if it's on the street than if it's, if it's in your yard. That's just my opinion. It's more of a nuisance as well.
Okay. But where I come from, you read everything together. It's known to exclude recreation vehicles to be parked on the street. So you have that option.
Right. For eight months. Because during the winter months, you can't park it on the street because of the snow removal from December first to April first.
Overnight.
Overnight, right.
Yeah. Yeah. But you can, it can be moved. So you, there are some options. But if, the way it reads here is, you know, it, it seemed like you can't park it on the street at all. But that is an option here. I'm not going to disagree that you might get banged out there and, and wouldn't want it, and the neighbors wouldn't want it, but it still comes down to, you haven't been excluded. It isn't like you brought it home one day and you, where am I going to put it? And that's why, so we, we haven't disallowed that in the town. So what I, what I, not, what I object to and not object to is, first, I, I agree with you. Everybody complained about being on the road. I, I, everybody complained, if I lived across from you, why is it on the road? Well, I can do that. So I understand what you want to do. But my, my point is, you could park it anywhere on your lot, and your neighbor doesn't get a shot as they're saying anything the way it's written now. You could park it right on the line. You could, you could be fifty feet away, your house and everything, and you could put it right next to your neighbor's house, Breeze Way or whatever, and no one can enforce anything. So it's, it's, to me, you, you've got to look at the whole picture. It's the fact that, you know, you, you're going to violate someone else's rights by doing that. If it's, if it changes like this, and there's nothing the building inspector can do because we don't have setbacks or where it can go and where it can't. So that's, that's probably my biggest objection to it. It's no different that, yeah, I know you've got a big RV. It's, I don't think anybody would want to shed right on the line that goes up, you know, twelve feet in the air. It's, and that's, and with this bylaw, parking, I don't even think we have a rule where you can park. Correct, Mr. Crowley? If I wanted to park it in my front yard, there's nothing that you can tell me I can't, correct?
Yes, there's no, no, no exception for parkings on registered vehicles.
Yeah.
One of our general bylaws would state it has been to a side or rear yard and has been covered.
Yeah. Yeah. So if you want to, if, you know, if your driveway isn't long enough, and you don't got a good side yard, you could stretch it right across the front of your house. And there's nothing you can do about that. So the whole purpose is, let's keep everybody kind of in conformance. I understand what you're trying to do. My opinion is, if they had some more, like some of the other towns, to be more in conformance, I don't see as, as an issue. But here, you know, if you have a fight with your neighbor, and you don't like, like them, you know where my RV's going, right? So you can't see the neighbor anymore. So it'd get pretty testy. And Mr. Crowley won't be able to referee that because it's allowed anywhere on the property. I think we all know if you have a septic, no one's going to park it on the septic, or they shouldn't. But without some type of little bit more on this, the do's and don'ts, I'm not going to really support it now because it's going to go the other way. Meaning that people could do whatever they want, park it, and then it becomes a bigger mess. Me, if you come back and change it a little bit, like did some side yard setbacks or where it can go, what makes sense? Yeah, people, you're going to put this in front of town meeting, remember that. And a lot of them are going to have the same opinion as me, is they can go anywhere, and that gets all people riled up. If you give people an option so they can visualize where it can go and why, and it makes sense, this, I don't think that's an issue. But if you don't, you just say, I can slam it anywhere in my yard, and you can't say anything. I think that's going to make a tough road a hole, so to speak, to get it through town meeting and all that. But, and the other thing is, you can always say I can park it on the street, which could help your cars, except for, you still have the people that are worried about somebody parking it right smack in, in their way or something to that effect.
Yeah. Well, can I, can I refer to the, the phone call that you did get of, of complaint?
About it? I believe he's referring to, after we sent Mr. Kirby the violation, he did move it onto the street, and the neighbor rang complaining about the street, which I explained, I have no jurisdiction on the street. It's, that's a police matter. I know we do have an ordinance in town on, on street parking. I don't know if it extends all the way out to the suburbs, but I do know in the center of town, we have a year round ban. We just don't enforce it because without snow, there's no need to enforce it. But in the winter months, we do. But that was the phone call I got, the neighbor that complained, also complained about it being on the street. But as I explained, we had no jurisdiction on that. And just to go back to, Mr. Chairman, you're about the Dover and some of the towns. I know Mr. Kirby said eleven towns had no zoning on it. The reason they don't have any zoning on it is if there's no zoning on it, it's not allowed. It's banned outright. So if you don't have it in your zoning, so those eleven towns, exempt them. That's how they get around not having to put it in if they ban them completely by not putting it in their zoning.
That makes sense. If it's not there, you can't do it. I just think Dover, this never cropped up.
So maybe if we just add some of the, you know, little detail about the setback from the.
We can't.
We can't.
This is the article that was proposed. It's proposed by the applicant. This is not a, we're only.
But, but he could do it.
Yes.
But you would have to make sure it's within the scope of the article so that you can't, you can't be more restrictive.
Right.
And all that, so.
And I just want to say one thing about parking on the street. I mean, I mean, a lot of people don't want to have a, a vehicle parked on the street because it's a safety issue. You know, if it's a narrow street and a vehicle's parked there, I mean, just, just today when I drove down my street, and there was a truck parked there, and I couldn't see around it. You know, so it's, it's not, it's not really a good alternative for anyone who had a large RV parked on the street.
Well, I think you, you might not have, you know, think the way I do, Phil, not based on the fact that, Mr. Crowley said it best. I see nothing until someone hands it to me.
Right.
So if your good neighbor's Sam, your neighbor ain't going to turn you in. If you're a bad neighbor, Jim, come on up. That's what it comes down to.
I would just.
But this gentleman is trying to be legal and honest with you.
As a petitioner, you put a lot of effort into this, I'm sure. And I don't want you to think that, you know, we're trying to knock you down. It's not that at all. It's when a change is made, you want to do it once and do it right so that it protects everyone. And personally, I can only speak for myself, but I, you know, if it had buffers on there, I would be more apt to accept it. I just feel that, you know, as Jack said, if you don't like your neighbor, you really could make it misery for them. Or if you have a tiny lot and a huge RV, it could really become an issue. So I think the concept, you know, you're headed in the right direction. It's just, it needs a little more.
Just, you know, I'm not as bothered by that, only because I, I would hope most neighbors are now looking to do things like that. I, I trust that they don't. I don't, I don't feel, you know, that. But.
Yeah, but Phil, okay, I'll say this. If you've got a nice side yard, and you got your deck over there and everything else, and on this side of your property is your garage, where are you going to put your RV? Over there, so the other guy can see it. So you're going to put what suits you the best, not your neighbor. And that's what this will allow to do.
Yeah. I, I'm good with putting, you know, if we can add the, the buffer.
Yeah.
I think that would be a better.
No, I think it would too. I'm not.
Approach, yeah.
Yeah. You're trying to solve a little problem, but this one would just take, I think, the other way. And could be even, even, even worse. You ever had any other complaints? Is this the first one?
No. I believe I probably dealt with seven complaints from neighbors that we, that we were moved their RVs.
Were they RVs or trailers?
Mixture. We took from, I think Mr. Kirby's, probably one of the smallest, we dealt with up to fifty footer.
Where I grew up, the people had trailers, but they always put them in the backyard to get them out of the way of everything, and they could put a top over and everything else. I know an RV, it's a pretty big machine to drive in your yard and move around, so.
Now, the warrant is still open, so it's possible for the planning board to make a, its own change to the bylaws.
Phil, why we, we shouldn't be getting involved at this late state, cause we can't. Because the warrant will be, what, closed in another week or two?
Yep.
So the way the process goes is, you have to submit it to the selectmen and they have to bring it back to us and then we have to advertise. You hit all those dates, you'll be into November.
The petitioner might be able to make a substitute motion at town meeting.
Well, that's what I'd recommend is, what you do is you talk to, you can always make a substitute motion. You might wanna find out, are you going too restrictive? It'll get shut down, or can you do it this way? But that's, that's your choice. And do you understand what a substitute motion is? All right. This is the main, we have a unique thing. Fincom makes, finance committee makes the main motion. So the town, town meeting will get it like this. And the town meeting, they always say, we make the Fincom's motion, the main motion. So if they're in favor, it becomes a main motion, you're pretty much home free. If they say they don't like it and it's still the main motion, then you got issues. But there's a thing called substitute motion, that if something within here you find, typically when you go through the finance committee, it's, zoning's harder, way harder, cause they're all used to, oh, we'll, we'll move, you know, 500 grand here from DPW over to police. You could do that every day of the week, but this is mass general law that gets real touchy. And even after you do it and they approve it, it still has to go in front of the attorney general and they review it to make sure the dates are hit right and nothing, you exceeded the authority. You can still get knocked back because of that. This, this is a whole mass general law process. But you have a chance for a substitute motion that you can find out is what would be palatable to everybody. And I think you've got a finance committee hearing sometime September. Did they give you, tell you that yet?
Uh, they said it would be sometime in September.
Yeah. I forget what the date is, but it's on the schedule. So between now and then, you might wanna find out how you can make it more palatable, I guess. If you want. You don't have to. You can run with this.
From somebody from the finance committee?
No, you could, you probably have to, you could always ask. I don't know. I don't think you wanna go with that, Jim, right? You don't, he would, it's a tough thing to know whether they exceeded or not exceeded. Um, no, he wouldn't. The thing, first off, it's his, so the town shouldn't be giving out free legal on that. But there are people who have some knowledge, or you can check on, Google up on Mass, and see Massachusetts and see if there's someone who can point you in the direction of what's more restrictive and, and less restrictive, okay? I'm not sure which way this will go, because you're taking something that's not allowed to allow it, but now if you wanna bring it back, to me, it's making it more restrictive. But here's a quandary I see. Yes, you are making it more restrictive, you did that, but you're starting something that you're gonna allow all the way. So it's more, it's starting out the most restrictive if you follow. So if you go this way, can you come back? Or once you go this way, you can't come back? I, I don't know if I'm making sense to you?
Yeah. And I've driven through town and I've seen many, many other trailers and RVs and many of them are up against the road and many, many of them are up against their property line. And my only thought process is that this will raise quite a bit of controversy. Many, many RV owners who don't have the luxury of, of having a setback.
Yeah. But they, once again, the only way to be effective is someone drops a dime.
Yeah.
And sometimes a phone goes off the hook when that happens. Put it over here. So we, since everybody's had their speech, I'll make them, we make a motion. And what, like I said, we're only a, what do they call it, board?
Advisory.
Advisory. You can have this dialogue with Fincom and they can help point you in the right direction. Cause they're probably the one, like I said, they're the ones who make, yes, we love it, or no, we don't, or maybe you can fix it like this and they can delay their vote. Typically, what we say one way or another, doesn't get a lot of weight compared to what the finance does committee. I don't know why, but, but when you're at town meeting, especially if this comes at the end, town meeting, finance committee loves it? Okay, good, we're going home. So that's the reality of things, but the finance committee could help you, but we're only, like I said, advisory board. So I'll make a motion to support this.
Favorable action.
For fa, I'm sorry, favorable action. Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, favorable action, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
So three to two.
Don't take that as a no, though.
Okay.
Take it as a spruce it up.
Okay, yep.
Okay.
What do I do? He's no. You would no too?
No.
Yeah, I couldn't hear, I couldn't hear.
Yeah.
It's always two, three then.
Oh, I thought Paul said he had me in favor.
I, I said aye.
You said aye, okay.
I did aye.
Okay, yeah, so I thought it was three to two in favor.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
All right. Okay. All right. The hour being after 7:05, we have a scenic road hearing.
Thank you.
With the hour being after 7:05, we have a continued public hearing on August 17th at 7:05, as this was continued from the previous. And according to section 40, chapter 40, section 15, scenic road act, mass general laws, and chapter 87. So what we have here is, we have an application for scenic road, okay? And with that being said, as we know, this was taken out last time, and now we have Mr. American, you're representing the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. Before we get going, I, I'm reading. And it's, I'm not quite sure, Dan. I know we're supposed to, on scenic roads, you come to us, you wanna move a stone wall, or you wanna get rid of a tree, right? You're asking to reconstruct.
Right.
It's not in our bylaw, it's not the scenic road bylaw. I don't, now, here's the issue, Dan. I don't know, as you know, is I wanna do things right, so I don't even know if our vote means anything or how we do it or so on. So if we can't vote, vote to reconstruct, we can't do, as you know.
Well, we're altering a stone wall.
Yeah, but it's already altered, that's the thing, and it's reconstructing, okay? Now, I can look at it as you took it out.
No, it was only one small section that was impacted.
We got, whether it's one stone or a thousand miles, we're dealing with a wall that was done. Now, if you could look at it another way, if you wanna put it back on the town property, you'd have to get permission for that. Think about it that way. Going from the, the whole legal sense of the scenic road. So my point is, we don't, it's not written into the scenic road to have a scenic road hearing to reconstruct. We all know the background of the issues. What is the mechanism to make this the way it should be? That's what I don't know. I'm not sure this will give it to you. I'm not sure if this will hurt you or help you or whatever.
Just trying to find the language on that.
On the scenic roads?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's 452.21. And that's preservation of natural resources definition. It says, any person pursuant to this bylaw regarding cutting or removal of trees, tearing down destructions of stone wall or portions thereof in connection with the repair, maintenance repair or paving work on the scenic road shall go through the select board, submit it to us. So it's talking about, you wanna take down, which we all know, but it, there's nothing here that says you wanna build back. Not, I'm not standing, what I'm saying, we all know that what happened.
My, my view of the, of the regulation is that he could do it by right. Because if you look at the definition of tearing down or destruction of stone walls, the term tearing down a destruction of stone walls but shall not be construed to include temporary removal and replacement at the same location with the same materials. But the town's practice is that we have to come to you to alter the wall in any way. I, I view the, the reconstruction of the wall in the same location with the same materials as being permitted. But, you know, we kind of, we went through this with town administration and they said, no, you gotta come see the planning board to do this. So just so you know, what I gave you, the first two photos of what I gave you are what the wall looks like now. And the third photo is a photo from maybe four or five houses up the street, which is kind of, kind of what he wants to do, which is basically just make it a little more structured and put granite posts on either side of the driveway entrance. So, I mean, I guess what I would ask is that you consider taking a vote in favor of this and then it would be up to the, you know, the town's administrative staff to determine whether that's okay or not. You know, I, I've made the argument that permission is not needed to rebuild it in place with the same materials, but it's not been received that way. So they say you gotta come to the planning board.
Yep. Okay.
So my question is, and I'm just trying to make sure I'm on the right track, so if you can just clarify for me.
Yeah.
So my recollection of all of this is that we had a hearing, scenic public road hearing scheduled, and they went in and demolished it ahead of time. And we asked at that point why we were having the hearing because it was already done. So we directed the applicant to the select board who, and just, I'm stating what I think, okay, who came up with this set of, okay. And I thought that was our, the end of our dealings with this, so why are you back? That's where I'm lost.
Because we were told that in order for Andrew to reconstruct the wall, we needed approval from you under the scenic road provisions.
But that wasn't, okay. So then the select board, this is just.
That was just disposition of that small section that was done prior to our hearing, the prior hearing. That disposes of that, because the select board dealt with that.
They dealt with it being done before the hearing. That was this.
Yes. And they say at the end of that, any further work on the wall requires a scenic road approval.
Okay. And because we never had the opportunity to say, move these rocks, do this, is why you're back to us now, correct? Cause usually at a scenic road, we say, yes, you can take that tree down, but you have to do this. Or yes, you can move that portion of the wall, but then you have to replace it here. So that's why you're back to us, cause we never had that opportunity to say that?
We're back before you, cause he wants to rebuild the wall in a nicer way. And we've been told that that requires approval from the planning board under the scenic road.
So is he in the spirit of the law, moving the wall, then, you know, if, if.
It's not, we're not moving or removing any wall.
Right.
He just wants to rebuild it in the same place with the same materials.
Right, but that's, maybe you might stretch, you know, he's moving in the sense that he's, he's rebuilding it. You know, say, say you hadn't been involved in the situation earlier where you had, you know, the wall, part of the wall had been taken down and something came to us and wanted to rebuild the wall, make it a little nicer. Is that something we would not hear? Would that be in the spirit of the scenic road?
What, rebuilding it to make it look better? That's not in here.
Yeah.
And what you think is better, I may think is crap, or what you think is crap, I may think is better. But the other thing is, the whole purpose scenic road, Phil, it's supposed to look like it did 300 years ago.
Yeah, yeah.
No, how, you know, I'm not gonna say, I don't think it's a great wall. It's typical farmer just mounted the things up, but that's the whole purpose is, cause the other house up the street, yeah, it's a pretty wall. I'm not too sure if it's on the town line or not.
That's what I was just gonna say, it's setback.
Probably not. And the other thing, I would say, you're not gonna be able to put those granite posts on town property, because that's not part of.
This is town property.
Can't do that. You can move them back.
Sorry, town is not doing that. No, you tell posts on town property.
Yes, yes, I would. I didn't furnish comments because the comment was already in the tree warden's letter.
Do I have that tape?
Yeah.
The tree warden and county?
Yeah.
The tree ward is next to them.
I don't recommend that the two be on the president's property.
So they'd be behind the property line. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, that's, okay. So one definite thing, regards what happened previous, you can't rebuild the wall that's already there. It stays as it is. I know you don't agree.
So you're saying the planning board can't take any action on this?
No. You, we got a two-part here. One that got blown out before, and one, you're proposing to redo the whole wall.
Correct.
You can't do re, forget what happened a while ago. You can't come in front of us and say, I don't like the way the wall looks, I'm gonna make a pretty wall. Whole purpose scenic road is you don't touch. The only time you get to touch is if you need to get a driveway access to it and you move it. But you just can't decide you're gonna rebuild the whole wall. The whole purpose of the scenic road, keep it scenic in the state it was whenever it was built, right?
Okay.
And our scenic road doesn't even allow that either. There's, there's nothing about rebuilding, so.
Well, actually, there is, but.
Not rebuilding existing. It tells you what's in the way, Dan.
No, it says, under the definition of tearing down and destruction, the temporary removal or replacement at the same location with the same materials is not considered tearing down or destruction. You're not allowed to tear down or destruct. You're allowed to do other things. I guess we'll have to take it up with the town administration on the interpretation of that. If, if the planning board's view is gonna be that you can't act on this, that's okay, then we'll, we'll talk to the town administration.
Well, you have two, you have two parts. One, how to handle the previous.
The previous is resolved. You told us we had to work with the select board to get that resolved, and that was resolved through the select board.
So you've, so it's back to where it's supposed to be, according to that?
The wall went back.
Oh, went back, so they're happy?
Yep.
Oh, all right.
It's all done.
Oh, you didn't say that here, didn't?
Oh, I, Katie had.
That's where I'm gonna miss. I thought you were here to, to put it back the way it was, what you took out. So you're all clear with that? All right.
It's back.
Then, okay.
That's all it was.
All right, that's fine. I like that better. But as far as I'm concerned, you read the scenic road, you just can't rebuild walls any way you want. I mean, if this was the pyramids, I don't like the pyramid. I can't rebuild it.
Okay.
So I have another question, sorry. Lots of questions tonight. It looks like, so this is scenic road because it's on, you know, it's within the, this looks like it's more setback on the person's property, is that correct?
I don't think so. Lincoln Road is, well, it looks, it's hard to say.
Forty foot in one rare area, 50 foot in another, but all over the place.
There's walls everywhere on Lincoln.
But I mean, from the edge of the road, clearly, this one's a couple of feet and this is, this looks like it's much.
Yeah, but one of the things is, we, first off, we don't know it's his property. Second off, we don't even know if there was a wall there.
No, I understand, but what I'm saying is if that's on his property, that's completely different.
I just, I just provided that as an example of what he'd like to do with the wall.
Okay.
Not to say that somebody else did it, so he should be able to do it. So, again, if it's, if you were the planning board, you can't act on this, cause it's not within your scope.
Oh, no, no, we can act on it. I thought we had something to do with making up the last part.
No.
No, this is, you wanna redo it, make it look pretty. My opinion, I can act on it. I'm gonna say no, because it doesn't allow in the bylaw.
Okay.
You don't put vinyl siding on a antique house, kinda same thing.
Can you see the part as a bylaw, Jim?
I mean, I guess I would just say to you that stone walls that are unmaintained forever fade into nothingness eventually. That's what happens to them.
Yeah, but.
I don't think it's the spirit of the, the scenic road regulations not to allow maintenance of a stone wall, but.
So it says, shall not be construed to include temporary removal and replacement at the same location with the same materials.
Right. The, the scenic road regulation basically, basically says you can't engage in the tearing down and destruction of stone walls without permission from the planning board. And it, the definition of tearing down and destruction of stone walls does not include temporary removal and reinstallation in the same place with the same materials. So it's not a precluded activity and it's not something, in my view, it's not something that needs a scenic road hearing, but we were directed here.
Would you be using the same stones?
Yes. And it would be a dry laid wall. It'd just have a little more structure to it. It's not gonna be a mortared wall or anything like that. We certainly put the granite posts outside the sheet layer. That's easy enough.
Can I just ask, uh, town?
Can I just ask town engineer something?
Yep.
So Carl, when we, when, when, there have been other situations where a wall was moved and rebuilt, you know, for whatever reason, you know, under the scenic road law, you know, where we gave permission, do you inspect it afterwards? Does someone inspect it to look, or they just go and do it and we...
There haven't been that many during my tenure, so I haven't really gone out to see another one that was moved. I can't recall. There's some up on Lincoln Road going on right now. But the next step usually after this is to issue a curb cut permit. I honestly don't remember if we issued one here or not. I think we might have.
It has an existing curb cut.
Right. So, you know, normally that's a thing, it's, this is a little unusual. There have been incidences up on North Street, I think, where there have been some walls neatened up or that were in disarray and the butters have approached to try and straighten them out or whatever you wanna look at it. So this is, I, I agree, I saw, I, it's the one, the, the house that he pictured in here on Lincoln Road is a reasonable example, I guess, of, I think, where you want to go with this. And originally, when we, we saw the original application, we recommended that if the wall's reconstructed, it be put on the right-of-way line as well, because it'll leave the shoulder available for sidewalks or whatever you wanna do later on, or, or snow storage or whatever. But it, it makes sense to me if it's going to be relaid up to put it on the right, current right-of-way line.
Thank you.
But the whole purpose scenic road is so you just don't go rip stone walls down and do what you want. The purpose is to maintain it the way it's been since day one.
My only question is, it's hard to know whether this really was where it always was, or it's like such a jumble of stones, you know, even...
No, it's been, I mean, you go up there, there's a... No, you go up, Phil, you go up along there, they're kinda buried in the woods and so on and so forth. I'm gonna tell you, you're gonna tell me that Lincoln Road would look all pretty with that stone wall? It would look nice, but it wouldn't be scenic anymore, would it?
No.
It would be 2023 look. Doesn't, the whole purpose scenic road is, is you can get on your property, I need a driveway. All right, I'm gonna take the stones out and go there. Or trees in my way, I'll take the tree down, because it's town stuff we're dealing with. But doesn't give you the right to go and redo the town wall because you don't like the looks of it. And we did have one on North Street across Gavin's old house there. I forget the name of the builder, and he wanted to go on the one side, and he took the stones from the one side and put them on the other, because it didn't work for his driveway. It's on the right on North Street heading towards Fisher. So, and, and all he did was plain is, I wanna go over here, my driveway, it's not gonna work over here because of whatever the way of the land was. So he just, whatever he's taking out here, he put on there, almost to the stone, and it looks all the same as it was before. Well, what do you wanna do, Dan?
What do you wanna do?
Well, my own thing, I'm gonna make a motion to deny because it's not in, it's not, it's not in the scope of the scenic bylaw. Count the votes, I don't care, but...
Yeah, it looks like it's in the scope, but I, I, I hear your concern about how we put the wall, you know, the wall back to make it look historic.
No, we don't put, it's there. You don't touch it. You don't touch historical stuff. That's the whole purpose of historical. It stays like that.
But Jack, Jack, the, the wall has been touched, right, because he, he touched it and then, and then this whole...
No, 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 he only, he...
It was a small section on the wall.
He, he, why not an existing curb?
Oh, okay. I, I was sure, okay, all right.
But the law is so ambiguous, it's written.
Well, it doesn't say you can redo the whole wall.
Okay, he, okay. And then the rest of it is all natural?
So the, my point, Phil, is you're going along like that. I don't like the trees out there. I wanna plant these trees, I'm gonna cut those down. It's like...
But we wouldn't, yeah, we wouldn't just allow that.
It's no different than rebuilding the wall to what somebody's liking. It's the town's wall, that's what it looks like.
We'd like to withdraw the request.
Okay. So when you find something, you come back, you get it, you know, we have it, right?
Okay.
All right. And make a motion to allow the applicant to withdraw?
Second.
There's second, Phil. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain.
Thank you.
See you.
I received a Gmail this morning.
Do you have anything else?
At the street acceptance discussion, Master...
No, you got, you got the... Yeah, I'm ready. We got that? Okay, with the hour being after 7:20, we have a continued public hearing for Warwick subdivision. Last thing we received back in July was from the police, we never read, that there's no impact to public safety. So with that, and memory serves me, we're supposed to get a legal opinion from the applicant, and... We seem to all have one in our folders tonight, and that seemed to come in today, so. First time we've all seen it, so ain't much for us to discuss here. I, you know, just seen it now, so. Opinion is what we've previously stated.
Okay, but let's, before we go.
Excuse me?
This came in today.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so we're not gonna discuss it because it's not 14 days. No one here has had it.
I'm here, I'm gonna, I'm gonna explain to you what...
No, you're not gonna explain something we haven't had the opportunity to see.
Okay, so what am I here for then?
Well, I don't know, Lou. You were supposed to get this to us. You know the 14-day rule, so that everybody can look at it. All right, so, yeah, all right, here we go. We're gonna get, don't antagonize me. All right, very simple. You have a 14-day rule, you know that, you've done enough here. You watch this, listen to me. I'm the chairman, you're not to speak. If not, you'll be asked to leave, okay? We have 14-day rule, you dropped this, some legal opinion in our lap today. Nobody's had a chance to read it. Okay, answer me this. Did you just give it to us tonight?
Yes, I did.
Okay, do we have a 14-day rule? Do we have a 14-day rule? Yes or no?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes or no, please?
You have it for plans?
No, the 14-day rule submitting stuff from the applicant.
I don't know what the rule, I don't know what the actual wording in the regulations calls for, but I believe it's for plans. But in any case, I understand we just submitted the, the legal opinion. My understanding is that you said at the last hearing that we would submit a legal opinion, you would refer it to town council. So we refer it to town council.
Once again, we haven't seen it. You don't know if we need to or not. All right, sit in here, Lou, and, you know, turn me in the ethics, whatever you wanna do, like you're doing to my wife. Very simple. You sent this last night at 10 o'clock.
What are you arguing about? I'm agreeing with you.
Okay, then, we don't talk about this tonight. We take it up at that hearing.
So we had agreed at the last meeting that we would provide the opinion.
Very simple question. You've had a month. Why'd you wait till last night?
Actually, I don't control the summer vacations of the attorneys, okay, so...
Well, I tell you what, I'd fire my attorney, who I, who I told he has to have within two weeks.
It's really kinda, it's not important.
This isn't important, okay.
It's not that important to me. It's not a priority. It's what we thought it was and what it's been. So we, we already had agreed to extend the timeline for the planning board to make a decision.
So we can pick this up at next time, right?
You can discuss it whenever you feel like it. I mean, it's really...
Yeah, it's our fair to, for all of us to take a look at it now without having...
Very simple. It's very simple. It's exactly what we presented the day, day one that we submitted the application.
Maybe simple to you, but, you know, I, you know, I've always learned in life, if you and me are opposite sides, I don't use your attorney for my advice, and nor should the planning board.
Quite honestly, I don't think it required a legal opinion, to be honest with you, so the, the facts are the facts.
So this is a complete submission from your guy and everything there?
It's essentially what we submitted on day one. It's essentially what we submitted to the selectmen for the street opening permit and what we submitted to the town engineer the day we filed the application. It's essentially the same information that you've had for over eight months. So please, don't tell me you need time to review it. It's already been here. It's the same information. If you need more time, fine, we'll give you more time.
All right, can I ask a question? You, you don't have, you said you submitted all this information prior to everybody, is that correct?
Always been submitted. It's part of the application process.
Originally, okay.
Opening permit.
Okay.
It's part of the town engineer's review of the application when we, before we filed the submission.
All right, as we go through here, very simple, exhibit I is town meeting...
That's the town meeting vote.
You never submitted that.
It's irrelevant because the order...
Wait a minute, it's not irrelevant. You said this is what you submitted to us in the selectmen, but now it's irrelevant because it's in here. You know, I just don't understand.
The town meeting vote is irrelevant to the order of taking. The order of taking...
We're not gonna get the legals of it, but you made a statement here. Your statement, was this a true statement?
I don't wanna argue with you.
No, okay, listen, I'm gonna get this, I'm gonna get this on the record. You said to us, this is a complete thing you submitted to us in the selectmen, but you just admitted that was not part of it. Okay, then, thank you. Then don't tell us something was, been already submitted when it hadn't been. That's all I wanna get on the record.
Get it on the record.
Yes, you agree with that.
That's very important to me.
Yeah, get it on the record.
But Mr. Chair, I think we should keep the, try to keep the, the attention down a little bit and make this respectful...
Respectful, he, Phil. You once in here, when he sits and speaks, he doesn't have any respect for any of us. He just speaks when he wants to.
I asked permission to speak, Mr. Chairman.
No, you just come up and started speaking.
Oh my God, did you ask me? Did you have a continued vote?
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I should be nice. Okay, so what we have here is we got something at like 10 o'clock, I guess, it came in on the email, Kate had said, for something that you knew we were gonna take up tonight, and we didn't have any time for us to review it, so therefore, it was kinda, didn't make sense to be here tonight.
I'm not arguing with you, Mr. Chairman.
So we can just schedule this for the next meeting?
If you need town council to review it, we'll come back. I think we had agreed to a, you have a September meeting, but we asked that we come and present this at the August meeting, which we did. It wasn't my understanding that it had to be submitted two weeks before. You, if you go through the video of the last meeting, you'll find out that we were just required to submit a legal opinion. You would refer it to town council. So feel free to do that. It doesn't require an argument.
I know, you just...
Okay, well then, I don't know why you're asking, why you...
No, I don't argue, Lou. You, you get as high as I do, and then you sit there with that little smile. I don't, as you know, you and I are both on the same type. We're both pig-headed. We, can we agree to that?
Usually I'm right, though. You haven't.
Yeah, usually, yeah, okay, Lou. Well, in what way you're not doing that well?
You've admitted many times that you've never been right, but I mean...
Yeah, yeah, I know. I, I don't have the experience, but, you know, hey, let me ask you a quick question, though. I just wanna see, I see something, so that we make sure we have it. I read there, just going through here, blah, 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 blah. They say, I wanna sort of something here. Is it attachments or exhibits? So all these are their exhibits? This is all what you submitted? There's nothing that they back up? So they don't, so there's no court case or anything that they wanna submit with this?
There's a court case cited in there, and they...
Sited, but it's not part of this. That's what you're saying.
No, it's not. If you're gonna refer it to legal counsel, they'll find it.
Geez, it's interesting, but it's coming to us and we're not legal, have access to legal, so it would've been nice if we got it.
If you wanna read a 10-page legal...
Yes.
Decision, I'd be happy to provide it to you.
I've been down that before with many...
Whatever, you, you just asked for a legal opinion. You didn't ask for the legal...
Yeah, but when the guy says and recites a case, I hope he'd give it to you.
Yeah, we cite the case.
Yeah, but I hope they give you the backup to the case.
I've never seen that.
Oh, never? Okay, I guess, you and I see diff, seen different stuff, so. You have nothing else?
I'm here to, to be entertained, I guess. No, we, I came here tonight because obviously we have a continued hearing. We're gonna continue it to the next meeting.
Okay.
We previously had granted an extension on the time for the board to make a decision.
Yep.
So we have probably revised plans that will be submitted, but those will be in the two weeks before your next meeting. But you wanted the legal opinion first.
So you, you have revised plans?
Well, I, I don't know what, where they stand. You wouldn't vote on any of the waivers at the last meeting, so I don't know, I don't know where we are, so. Do you recall, Carl, whether or not you made any comments that required any... I don't remember.
The last, the last revision I remember seeing was in June.
Yeah, what I, I'll review it with Rob. I mean, if you, if you made comments that require a change or a revision, then those plans will be in before the next.
Honestly, I don't have the file down there, so I don't remember the track.
I don't know, I think, I think I would've already submitted, so at least you can take that off the table, but I guess we're not gonna do that, just slow things up a little bit. That's okay.
I have comments from you on July 20th.
It wasn't, it wasn't my understanding that we were gonna have any discussion on this. Just simply present the legal opinion and you refer it to legal counsel.
I never narrowed the hearing to that. I said you're gonna have to get a legal opinion, but I didn't narrow it to saying you can't have Rob Turex here and all that. It was very clear. No, it was never narrowed to that.
So the next, so we'd like to continue to the next meeting, which is, I think, September 13th, I think, or... 21st, right, Kate?
At the meeting, they commented on your comment.
So we've read, the only thing we got for the record, other than what you said you submitted, is the police. Correct, Kate?
That came prior to, that was before.
I think it's in that last one. Yeah, it, it's came August 2nd, so we haven't had a hearing, so that's, it was staying with that. Okay. All right, so the applicant doesn't have anything to offer, so we'll continue it September, was it 21st? You don't really like that far.
Because we've got...
I know, hey, we'll just, you know, because I don't wanna not be accused of pulling up progress here.
Mr. Chair, just a point. Member Chevkarovsky had comments July 20th. So we commented on the last submission.
Those, those were after yours. Those came in after your comments. Yours were read and noticed, read and noted, on Ju, July 20th.
In July, okay.
Yeah, so that, that the plans could've been addressed since then. So we could've had that taken care of, correct, Carl? Would you agree?
Yes.
Do you need them, Carl?
What is, have you received other comments that we haven't gotten copies of? I just told you, the police is the only one that's come in since. The police? Yep. August 2nd, we received it, so that's the only one. So we'll look at Carl's last...
You have those comments.
And I'm sure Rob will take care of them. So September 21st, right, Kate? Is that what we're talking about?
And I know we got a full schedule, so we might as well, we're never gonna get before, put it 8:30, because we've got enough stuff that's gonna keep us. We won't be sitting around like we have in the past.
8:30?
What, 8:30?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm doing you a favor.
I appreciate it, really.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta explain the favor, so I look favorable if we ever get into a tip again, Lou. With the fact that if I put you at 7:10 and I got two others, we know it's gonna be a longer night, so it doesn't make sense for you to sit here from 7:03.
I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. You can say it again if you'd like.
I'd like, I appreciate your help there. Thank you.
So I'll make a, we'll continue this public hearing until September 21st at 8:30. Thank you.
Kate, I have a note from his extension only went to...
Mr. Chairman, if you receive a response from the town council between now and then, would you forward it to us?
We'll probably get it at like the night of, right before.
It's not rocket science, so I'm sure you...
If, yeah, we'll see what we do with it, okay?
All right, thanks very much. Appreciate it.
Yep, all right. Okay, Carl, we had something on the...
No, 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 that was Kate. I just wanted to... Oh, that's coming, you'll read it. Sorry.
All right, Carl, get the street thing, Kate. We're gonna do it, Carl. Missed the ball, though. All right. Yeah, we're gonna discuss your email back in July, Carl.
Sure.
All right, well, we wanna get on the stick and get these guys off, and one of them is Wall Street, so... All these people are over, they do on their bond, and I'm getting a little perturbed by the fact that they blow us off. So I think on Tri-Paw, on Boynton Estates, we should send a letter to the bank and to Petrosi, tell him that his extension has expired, and he better come up with when he's gonna get done, or we will have to take other action. That's the only way, and you send it to the bank. It's tri-potized. Everybody understand what we should do to get these guys a-rolling? All right, because he's got the bank or bond incoming, so he's, so we can do that for Boynton. Bubblin Brooks, this guy just fell off the face of the earth, right? Same thing with him, the chub.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, do you want where he is in life there, Kyle?
Oh, sure, we've got punch lists, um, and, and actually Boynton Estates is, is, most all are, are essentially done in the field for the most part. Um, there's a lot of outstanding ASBILs and other details, um, certificate of compliance with Conservation Commission. That's really what's holding Boynton Estates up, that and final cleaning of, of catch basins and manholes and things like that. That's the closest one. I, they have everything, they've got a deposit on for recording. The acceptance plan is on Mylar, the ASBILs are, as far as we're concerned, are done, but there are still few issues over at Conservation holding up the certificate. The others are a little further behind, a lot of the, they're, as I noted, they're, almost all the work is done in the field, except for some small items, but we've got, we've got outstanding item lists for all of them.
Where's Bubblin-Brook?
Uh, it's up off of.
No, I don't mean where, it's standing.
So it's, it's finished pave, the curb's in, um, but we don't have an ASBILt and we don't have an acceptance plan.
Okay, so.
And there's a very small amount of field items.
So same thing, send one, send him, he better, we should probably have him come in the first week of October, all of them. Kyle, what do you think?
Yeah.
Get him off the stick, I mean, they're gonna sit here and.
So if we wait till then, my only concern is, then they all claim winter.
No, they can't, they can just do it, but they know what they had to do. You wanna do it the 21st? Wouldn't, do you wanna be here till the 22nd? Huh? Till the 23rd?
It needs to sleep sometimes.
I didn't have, Mr. Chair, I didn't have time. I could, I could put the outstanding items, I can send them out. I, I could've had them for the meeting, but we were jammed up a little bit.
But we, okay, we'll do that, but we'll want them in here by the first October meeting. Just so that when they stand in front of you, you can, rather than, emails don't work, all right? I hope the Chubb is still, I assume it is, but you're paying the juice every year on that, it's pretty stupid. 396,000, already cost them a one and a half, two percent every year. They could want to get it done. Uh, Portland Way, same thing.
Same thing.
Yep, so what we can do is have a list, you have with our letter, and then see you on, in October. Ross Common, there's another one that fell off.
Yeah, once again, most of the work is done in the field, with the exception of Gigi's Way, which is part of it, all right?
My opinion is, faced upon, what I know about it is, I have a feeling that was sold off and it was never part of it, which shouldn't have been done, should've been illegally, but someone probably comes to sue me saying that. But it's interesting, I've talked to the, one of the guys who built the road, and he's not responsible for the, he told me the paving is the responsibility of the guy who bought the lot, which can't be.
Is or is not?
Is.
Yeah, there's, that's actually gonna have overtones in another one, because we've had, been approached about Hunter Lane, um, with the same sort of thing. That's a private subdivision, a private way off of, uh, Common Street. And one of the lot owners up there called and said they never got a finished coat. Now, that was never intended to be accepted, but probably should add that to the list, too. Yes, there is.
Okay, yep, gee, I wonder who was attached to that one. Hmm. Ross Common, though, we still, did they ever fix the crap that went in the woods? Remember that Ian Cook said all this stuff, because that's part of the whole deal, the, uh, open space.
So that, basically, that, there's a whole punch list that the, uh, Napa River Watershed has out there, and I haven't got an update on that, and I haven't followed the last discussion I had with the proponents as, come to me when you've got that straightened out. All right, and then, but with, with, there's still some on-the-ground things involved here, so it's, it's just, that's probably the furthest away of any of these things to being done. We do have, we do have ASBILs?
Can we get to Ian, or can you? Ask him what he's got left?
Sure.
Okay, and just so everybody understands, is Kyle didn't have it on his original bond, because there's no need to, correct? Because we're only building the road, but these guys went into the buffer areas or the common areas and started dumping crap. So you're not gonna bond something you don't know what's gonna happen. So Ian Cook, it's part of the, uh, Ross Commons, under the Potsdam Watershed, was in charge of all the, uh, what do you call, open space areas, and he found all is done. So now he wanted that, so we'll just slide any money left onto that, because they just dumped it, whether it was the builder, developer, or even just the homeowner, that's gotta get done before we can release it. But what's amazing is, there's something up here, Kyle, that just doesn't make sense. And Gigi's Way, if everybody understands, that's on North Street, comes off right across from the old, uh, front of a farm stand. And I think it's almost appeared it got sold, and there's no way that you can have a homeowner who buys a lot, be responsible to finish the road, because it's owned by, it should be owned by Whitman Homes, because he's bonded the whole road, if that was part of the original subdivision. So you can't sell your subdivision off to somebody like that, so, but that's gonna come down the pike at some time, Kyle, isn't it?
Yes.
And we've, we got a note of, Kate, can you put that in the letter to Ross Commons is?
I thought we were waiting for something from Chris to.
He was supposed to come back, but he hasn't, it's been over a year, right? He's gonna talk to you and, yeah. So just say, I have heard that it's up to the individual homeowner, the Gigi's Way, to pave this, which is a no-no, and we asked them to come and explain everything. You can't transfer your development rights to the homeowner. Sabodies, yeah, we're done with that, so that can go right to town meet, right?
Well, yeah, we're, we're not, we, we finished paved Sabodies, we did the sidewalk and the road. Uh, we're in the process of trying to get the bounds in, and then there's a little bit of work in the detention basin, so. The, the, we're, we're making slow progress on that, but it's not ready to go to acceptance yet. But anyway, that's off the thing, because we've liquidated, we've liquidated. This is more of a status for acceptance. The other one that isn't going anywhere is Echo Way, and I don't understand it.
Yeah, Echo's the other one. Do we have any other ones?
Uh, well, there probably are, but these are the most immediate ones, because they stick out, because really the roads are done. There's no reason why they can't go, you just gotta follow up on, on, there's a lot of procedural things here and a very small amount of field items. Like Echo, the bounds are in. I don't have a Form H. We've got draft acceptance plans and draft ASBIL plans, we've looked at them, but they still gotta jump over a few field hurdles there and, and, and get to the rest of the thing, and they all, almost all of them have conservation. They need to get active with the conservation and get, get their certificates of compliance and whatnot. We, that's, that's almost the first step, and so we can't let all the bond money go. It's right in the rules and regulation until that's, that's in place. But there doesn't seem to be much incentive for them to, even with money left, we're just not seeing much progress.
Okay, the, um, question on Echo, I know some other guys bought, do they know what they're doing? They've been down this road before, or they just, should they know that they gotta do it?
I think it was, I think it was a learning experience, uh, great guys, um, they, they, they really tried hard. They, they responded well, we did, but I think it's, it's something new.
Something new, okay.
They're not experienced at it.
Yeah, they know how to make a road pretty, but not get it.
But they've got a very experienced local engineer that should be able to help them through that, John Glossa. So, um, you know, and he, like I say, he's provided some ASBILs, we, we've got them. I still don't have, I don't still have an ASBIL for Portland Way, and I don't understand that.
We, uh, yeah, there's some reasons sometime, okay, so he has, so he has someone guiding them, okay, and that's the only ones I can.
And they're all, all, well, I wouldn't say Ross Common, that engineer is not common to this area, but everybody else is, you know, we've got people that are very used to how things go here to get through acceptance.
Oh, I know what's outstanding, Peach Street.
Yep.
My favorite one.
Which one?
Yeah.
The, the one that we have the bond on?
The five bonds?
The, the old bond, no.
Oh.
Yeah, the original two houses, they never did the overlay, like it's supposed to.
Yeah, and, and as an update, Mr. Chair, you know, there was some discussion at the time about, um, the town going through there with water, and that road did not make the cut for the lap, for the contract that's out there now. So essentially, that road's gonna stay a while longer like it is, and it's not great, but, um, it's gonna stay, and I don't. Some of these people I hear from, some I don't, you know, that one should be cleaned up as well.
Yeah, you know, it's, everybody thinks I'm the big bad guy, 'cause I also heard when I moved up to Office Condo on the Old Fisher School in 1985, when we bought, that the 1A was gonna be reconstructed, 1985, Kyle. So you know how long those, that's why this, plus why didn't you get the guy who could do this for 400 bucks?
Yeah.
That paper, it'd be all done, but anyway, Adams is another one.
Right. I, I didn't mean this to be a, a complete list of, of.
No, I know, but this is what.
Probably other ones, I've mentioned a couple. These were the ones that were, are, are destined for public acceptance, and they were most available and most recent, and really, there's not much stopping them from going.
All right, yeah, well, we want to clean them up as we go. The problem it can come down to is if you get too far out, and the worst thing is when the road starts to go.
That creates problems.
Yes, and you never have enough in the end, especially if you did it 10 years ago and the mix was, you know, 40 bucks a ton.
Right, so we don't want to get to 10 years, and some of these are probably getting four, you know, three, four, now anyway.
Can I ask you a question?
Yep.
So, you know, although they're not accepted, the town takes care of them, they plow them. And I understand why, because if there's a public safety issue, you want the ambulance, fire engines, police cars to be able to get in and out safely.
Right.
But is there something we could do, is there something we could put in our rules and regs that, like you find them after a certain amount of time, or something to, and you give them an incentive to not drag it out indefinitely and still take advantage of all the town services, although the town services shouldn't be there, if they're not accepted? Do you know what I mean? I feel like it's similar, and I won't get off on a rant, but it's similar to my feeling about the commercial space that doesn't get rented in the central business district. You know, they say they're going to put it in there so that we can approve the project, and then they have no intention of renting it out. I would like to see us do something to give an incentive, or, you know, I'm not trying to look at it as a penalty, but somehow have it happen in a timely manner, the way it was approved. I, I just think there's no, there's no reason not to do what they want to do and just say the heck with us, because there's no backlash.
Are they being taxed on the empty residential space, uh, empty commercial space, rather?
I don't know, and I'm not trying to spin us off on a tangent, but I think it's something we should talk about in the future.
What, down below?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the biggest thing, that's the biggest scam going on with the state.
And we even had a local attorney admit, like, say it to us, we're not looking to do a, you know, so it, it's a known fact when they come and apply before us.
Yeah, but what happened is when everybody opened up the mixed use thinking, oh, that'd be wonderful, all the developers, if you, if you remember, go back 10 years ago, they weren't doing it, because the price of rentals wasn't worth it. Once the rentals housing became a great market, hey, we can really make a killing.
No, I know, and I'm not trying to spin us off, but I think it's something we should look into, and in the same way with the street acceptances, because the town is paying to plow them. The town is taking care of them, and I think that they have no incentive to get it done.
Okay, this, it's been since day one, Kate, that's why they don't, they drag their ass on, can I say that to you?
Because there's no incentive.
No, well, the incentive should be, the town should be plowing. Matter of fact, the town came up.
For safety reasons, you can't do that.
I don't buy safety, Kate, Kate, why? We don't plow, plow private roads, do we?
I know, but.
No, with the, the safety, no, they would have to plow it themselves, they'd be responsible for the safety. The thing is, the town come back, because somebody took out a few manhole covers one year, because they're all raised, and they ended up 100 yards down the street, and then they said, no, we're not gonna plow it unless you put them back down to base course, and they raise them up when they go to put the final on. But they, if you keep plowing them, that's the only thing gonna keep their attention.
Well, maybe that's something we can talk about in the future, because I think that.
Well, we, we, we're not bound to plow them, because they're not, they're, they're a private road. Matter of fact, when I first got on the board, we were accepting, uh, Victoria, across from, uh, Water Towers, where they used to be on High Plains.
Yep.
I remember John Lee's father got in, oh, the curb's all ripped up and, ah, so we shouldn't accept it. Well, it turned out, goes, now, well, the town plows the road.
Sure.
So the guy's there like, what do you want me to do? He, the town broke him, so.
So, having worked for a couple of municipalities other than Whoppole, I look, and one of the strongest incentives, and it was the 25% holdback in the rules and regs on, 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 on the surety, all right? And if you look at these, there's still some substantial money on these things. So obviously, the cost of carrying the money or the availability, that financial incentive, even though it's a good one, is not there. Now, there's, you know, one is.
One's on crazy money.
Right, they're not, no, they aren't, and, and, and said, I, I'm not sure about the fine thing. That's something that I usually haven't seen, and I don't recall seeing a fine in any of the regulations, all right? But there certainly could be, put something in the regulations about the private maintenance of them, and it's at their obligation, and, you know, I've, I've, I've heard of other towns, you know, requiring contracts to be furnished to the board every fall.
Or even if the town could charge them for the plowing, or do something, I mean, something created, but.
No, no mechanism to charge them.
I don't know. Well, another night, but we should talk about it.
Yeah, but we shouldn't plow. We do that, then they'd have to plow themselves, and they'll get sick of that.
But, you know, one of the keys here, and I was late with this email, because, you know, this warrant is closed up, and these are not ready and whatnot, but they need to be done while in advance, so the time to rattle the cage is definitely at the next meeting on October, because, believe me, May comes awfully fast, so if you want to have them accepted in May, that means all this stuff's gotta be squared away and very early, probably, probably by February or what, you know? In other words, when that warrant's open, we gotta be, you gotta be ready to go.
Right after Christmas, it closes pretty quick.
All right, so, so my guess is, as much as we can do to promote this thing, I, I don't think, um, maybe a couple of these could be ready to go, uh, for the spring, but definitely the other ones aren't.
If you don't get it done, we'll pull it.
Yeah.
396,000 on Bubblin-Brook, what's left's a nice chunk. We can make it happen, as far as, there'll be enough money to pave it.
It is, and, and the odd thing that, you know, one of the things that we waited for, and I know you have long experience, actually more, you know, not just only yourself, but a long experience, and said, none of the items here are EverSource or, or Verizon or any of the utilities, which sometimes can take a longer lead time. Um, they're actually addressed on these, so it's really other things that, that developers have pretty direct control over. I, you know, I look and said, okay, they're having a hard time getting ASBILs and, and plans and bounds set. Well, most of the engineers are very busy, and they have been so for years, but still, it's a long time in the waiting.
Yeah, and along with you said, Kyle, the only time I remember, two things, one, it, Joey McDurvis about the light poles, remember that?
Oh, yeah.
That was, but he's still not done, and then we had up off of.
Right, but they made it.
With Cliff Snuffer's family lives, his daughter, by pole post, that subdivision.
Cherokee?
Oh, it used to, yeah, it used to be Niden Estates.
Okay.
All right, they, they had a light, a couple lights that went in, they're ready to go. But that was the only time, they were actually ahead of the game. It, I don't think we've ever been holding up these guys ever come by, oh, I don't have my lights in, or anything like that. We haven't seen that.
Yeah, right now.
Excuses are gone.
Uh, the, the last one I remember, I'm waiting for, well, Portland, uh, which is Pine Acres, had a wait, and, and so did Bubblin-Brook, they all do at some point in time, but they've gone beyond that, we've got them. You know, we waited for a pole on Olmstead for a long time. And, but, but you know, in all fairness, if we get, if we get the right, give it the right push, you know, we get results on that, too. But it takes a while.
Kyle, I remember at one point there was an issue with one development, about them getting the curbing or whatever. It was a backlog or something. Has that gone away, post-COVID, whatever, that issue?
It, it's still an issue, curb is not so, that's actually what's tall, uh, Pine Acres, and they got it. But curb is still a long lead time. Um, there's, there was always a, a, a delay for curb, especially, you know, if you go and order the curb any fall, you were gonna wait for it, but the lead times are still long and longer than they used to be.
Yeah, but me in the business, you don't wait, I need curb one tomorrow, and I don't pick up the phone tonight, so I need it tomorrow. You have to know the lead times are always been built in, if they go a little long, you should know that. So for these guys to cry, unless it's like two years out, which we went through a couple of years ago, but for most part, they should know standard delivery for curb is six months.
None of these subdivisions are waiting for curb.
No, I understand that. You know what it comes down to? Curb guy wants them, and they don't have the money, or they haven't built the houses to get the money, so that's, it's, it all comes back to the dollar.
Right, so there's a couple in progress now, you know, both Garden Path over off of Washington Street and, uh, Peach Street, New World Estates and whatnot, they will receive curb. But these are not long roads, so they're not big orders. Um, you know, the 1A job, that's a big curb order. Um, and that curb came from down south somewhere.
Yeah, can't come from China.
So.
Right.
Whatever buyout factors, I, you understand that. Whatever buyout factors, you understand that, Mr. Chair. So, anyway, there were long lead times, but we're not, none of these are held up by curb.
Held up by money, all right. And if you, at some point, get another, see what else is left out there. What, you don't want them?
No.
Just too much?
You know that.
I can't think of any.
There's some real old stuff out there, Mr. Chair.
Okay, moving on. All right, next one, master plan update.
So, first, I just want to say, everyone would have received a printed copy of the master plan. I want to first thank the master plan steering committee. A lot of work has gone into this. A lot of comments were made, a lot of, even though we did rely on Judy Barrett and her team, a lot of input actually did come from the team members, the committee members. So this is the final draft. And I think it's a, it's a very important report for the town. There's 102, roughly 102 recommendations. So now it's up to us to review it and vote on it. What I want to recommend is I did work with Judy Barrett, so she is open to appearing at either our October 5th meeting or our November 2nd meeting, but it will be by Zoom. She could not, she could not make it in person. And I think that we should go along with that, because I think it's very important to move this, to put the master plan forward. And I would like to make sure that we get it on the calendar early enough, because I would like as many members as possible from the committee, the steering committee, to attend. Again, I think this board has to hear from the members of the committee as well as Judy, so it's equally important that they be, that they also be attending. At least some of the members who can represent the areas that they, that they worked on. So I know we just got today, so not expecting that we would have looked at it. It was a very online, but this is now the printed copy. So, Jack, I would like to make the proposal that we invite Judy to attend our October 5th meeting for the, for the board, for the planning board, to review and vote on the, on the plan.
Phil, why can't she come in person?
So, and I've worked very hard at this. She has other commitments, so she only can come on the, our first Thursday meetings. She has an ongoing commitment on the third Thursday, so that limits right now to just half of our meetings. So on October 5th, she is, I think that's when she's in Washington DC for some kind of a meeting. But she's, and she's willing to do Zoom anytime. I mean, she, she did deserve both those dates. And then on November 2nd, she's in, she's in New Hampshire. I know she's very busy consulting. You'll find that actually, she's actually working with our town on the MBTA. I believe the MBTA work as well. So I did inquire about going into the next year, and I don't think we, first of all, I'm not sure how that was going to work out with her, but most importantly, I don't think we want to wait that long. I think we owe to the town to move this forward. There's a lot of very important recommendations, a lot of hard work went into this. And I think it's important for the town, just to be released to the town. You know, we, we are starting to use it and could be using it. I know, talking to Patrick. So it's really important that we, that we do get it out there and, you know, start, the goal would be to actually have some public meetings on it. You know, I'd like to appear before the select board to, you know, to give them an update on the review of the final copy. So I do urge the board to go with the October 5th meeting, because I think, as I said, I think it's very important that we move this forward.
As someone who is on the committee, I'm very disappointed, not in you, you worked hard, not in the committee, but I felt like we were put on the back burner, and they got paid a lot of money to do this. And there were several meetings she didn't attend, or, you know, she stopped coming completely in person. And I just feel for the amount of money that the Barrett group was paid, I really think it would be nice to finish it off with her in person. But, you know, I don't know, if that can't happen, then if she's not willing, that's, you know, I don't, I don't know what choice we have. I just find it very disappointing.
Yeah, there was a period of time when, for some reason, she kind of seemed to have gone away.
There were five months, five months where she completely dropped us.
And we got a lot of promises, I can't, but I think we need to pick up where we are. She, I've had a lot of conversations with her, just so you know. And I think we are so close in getting this completed. I think it's so important to get this out. I feel that, and maybe not as we would like to, you know, to do it by Zoom, but I do think it's gonna, you know, we will still be equally effective, and we'll be able to get all of our questions answered.
Five-month span went by where nothing happened, and I finally sent an email and said, what is going on? And then all of a sudden, she appeared back.
Well, we, I would tell you, there were a lot of emails going back and forth before that, so, yeah. So, but we are where we are, you know, so she's been very responsive the last month or so, so. So she did make, we had a number of changes that hadn't been made, and it wasn't clear what was happening, but they did go and make all those changes. This is our chance now to review this version of it. You know, I look at it as the final copy, unless you find something clear and leave wrong. So what I, you know, I would invite the board to read it. You know, one thing we don't want to do, our meeting where we actually consider the plan and vote on it before, before, you know, we have a chance to read it, of course, of course, Katie and myself are very intimately familiar with it being on the, on the steering committee, but for the rest of the board, a chance to look through it. There are some very important recommendations, and, you know, a lot of work went on into this by the steering committee. There was a lot of debate on many of these recommendations, a lot of rewording, and, you know, a lot of consideration on how best to do things, so.
All stepped in, lady? All right. Questions I have is, you guys had a meeting on this, and we never saw the vote on the last meeting on this. What was the vote? Do you have a copy or whatever?
Yes, actually.
Because one of the issues, Phil, is you have no meeting notes since May 20, May of 2022 on the website, so I have no idea.
Okay, so I, I'll take a look at that. I know we voted on, at our last meeting. We did vote to approve all of the minutes, so let me, let me.
And what was the vote for this?
So the vote for this was 8-0-0.
But what was the vote?
To approve it.
They approved it as it?
As it, it was a simple vote. We've already voted, every, every single recommendation was voted on individually. And those votes are actually in here. If you look in the section of recommendations, if you go to page.
Yeah, but you need the meeting notes. But my point is, so this was the last time you guys met, this was voted, it's good. There's nothing, has to be corrected.
That is correct.
Okay, well, can you get those minutes up so people?
Yes, no, and I apologize. I meant to follow up on that with Patrick, yeah.
All right.
So, but if you look, I'm starting page 151, are the recommendations. And there is a date and a vote for everything we voted on, for every single recommendation.
Yeah, I understand, but where's the final one? Because I know there was a.
Yeah, no, so we make, we all, I will, I will check in that, I apologize on that.
There should be something to the effect.
There is a, yeah, there was, there was a last meeting. I didn't bring my folder. For their last meeting, it was, it was actually a very short meeting, just a half an hour. No one on the steering committee had questions. We made a motion to accept the plan as is. And the vote was, I'll verify it, but I'm pretty sure it was 8-0-0. And I will, I will get those minutes, make sure they're posted.
How, how much we pay her for all this?
I believe it was 100, I don't know the exact amount, so I'd be dangerous to say. I think it was 160,000.
160,000?
Something like that.
I've never seen her once here, so, no, I'm not accepting anything until we get her here.
I thought it was 150, it's 160.
I mean, she should be presenting this to us. It sounds like she'll dodge. And the other thing is, how are we going to ask questions? More importantly, if people are in the audience, how are they going to ask her? It, Zoom doesn't work for something like this. I don't think someone you paid all this money to would just blows us off. Sounds like she's booked until 2030, the way it's going, so. Well, what's funny is she could make the MBTA stuff.
Well, I don't, and I don't know, you know, how they're working on that. I mean, that may all be remote, too. I don't, I don't know. Like I said, I do think it's important that we move this forward. And Jack, if you'd like to contact you yourself directly, there's nothing in the contract that says she has to appear in person. I did check with, with you on that, so.
Really? Wow. That's, I guess that has to be in the contract, or they're not going to do it. Another question, she all paid off?
I don't know. Yeah, I don't know that.
Well, that should be, to me, the way I work, I paid you 150, 160 grand, you don't want to come to the final? The board that paid you, and we haven't even met you, and you don't want to come?
Well, she did, she did go to several of our meetings.
Not our meetings, your meetings.
In the beginning.
Yeah, and she never came here.
Yeah.
So none of us have laid eyes on her, of course, that's all.
Well, I don't, I don't think you were expecting to meet with her till the very end.
I'm not going to meet with her on a camera.
Yeah.
All right, Paul, I'll start with you. What do you think?
I'm just taking this in, Jack, but, yeah, I mean, I agree. I mean, if, you know, somebody who does a plan and has, I mean, she's a subject matter expertise, you know, and have her here. I support that 100%.
Okay. Kate, you said it. John, what do you feel like?
I agree with that, yeah.
Okay. Totally need her here, Phil, so maybe she can work.
And again, I just want to let the board know, we've, we've worked very hard trying to get her here, and.
39-5.
I think, I think this is important to move this forward. You know, the months go by, the steering committee members aren't even going to remember, you know, our discussions, so to have this continuity. And we don't want to minimize the input of the steering committee, which we will be.
Okay, but, but you're giving all the reasons why we should just go ahead and vote with her on Zoom, because this is language for umpteen months.
I think it's important for the town, because we need.
I'm not going, no, that's, this is, you're pushing, you're pushing me, Phil, personally, and the rest of them, to vote on something from some woman who's in New Hampshire, and that's what amazes me. She's a Massachusetts person, but she goes to New Hampshire on the planning board.
Well, because we only have two meetings, we only have one meeting a month that she can make it, the first Thursday of the month. I think I, I sent you an email wondering if.
Yeah, but she knew our meetings were always the first and third, from the day one.
Well, I can't answer for her, and again, my, my only goal for pushing this is because I think it's in the best interest of the town to move the master plan forward, that we have some very important recommendations. Some of these can be, we should be promoting now, and a lot of work went into this, it's not just her, it was the steering committee. This does a really good job at documenting the current state of our town. So, so it may be, we may prefer, and I prefer her being here, too, but I'm looking at the, I just think this is so critical, getting this out there, and I think it can be equally effective. Not ideal, but equally effective, so I really, I really am urging this board to schedule the meeting with her, either on October 5th or November 2nd, so we can move this forward and we can get this plan out there. So that's my.
Is this the sentiment of the committee?
That's my appeal.
When the five months went by?
No, the committee was, the committee was on hold. We were in limbo, and we were waiting.
But what I'm saying, I mean, Phil, I mean, and again, I'm, I'm getting things late here, so I'm just trying to, but, I mean, if you guys, if you guys were in limbo for five months, right, but yet now, it's, there's important things in here we must agree to, which I understand, but was that the sentiment all of long, though? If you guys were sitting for five months doing nothing, waiting for this lady to contact you?
Well, we were working with her to get a whole, of changes made to the report. That's what, that's what came up. And for some reason, she had trouble ma, it's a long story.
Whatever.
But I don't want to make excuses.
No, no, I understand, I understand.
But, but as it be as a babe, we finally got things moving forward a month ago or thereabouts, and really want to get this completed. She is very adamant that she's not going to be able to meet with us before the end of the year at all. And you may argue we should put pressure on her, but I, I cannot do more than I've done, so. And she's not, she wasn't making a commitment for, I asked for what meeting could be after the first of the year, and she said, I can't. You know, for whatever reason, she can't make that commitment. So right now, I would like to see this move forward. I would like to see the town get its master plan. Like I said, it's not just her. The input of this master plan came from our steering committee members, of who Kate and myself were the two from the planning board. So the, the master plan committee, the steering committee was made up of originally 13, and then one member went off because she left her committee. But they were, they were elected or recommended by different boards. So, for example, the select board had a member, Glenn Mathy. So, so the major boards in the town had a member on the master plan steering committee, so that we covered the major areas of expertise. So every, everyone on the, on the, on the steering committee covered one, one area. And the idea being that, since it is covering such a, you know, the full breadth of services and issues before a town, it was important to make sure we had the right people on the committee to do that. Members worked really hard. We also had a number of forums, because the master plan should reflect what the town residents want. So it isn't really the steering committee's master plan, it's the town's. So we did that by having a number of forums, and we also did some questionnaires, and we had a lot of opportunities for people to have input. It was challenging because it happened during COVID, so it made it more difficult to have public meetings, but we did do that.
Let me, let me just ask one question, Phil. What was this woman's responsibility? What was her, I mean, other than getting a book from her? But what is, what did she bring? So all of this input came from all of these committee members, right, all these service, I get all that, okay? It should be the town's book, because the people of the town knows the town better than a, a, a third party, right? But I'm saying, what was her specific role?
So, so Judy Barrett has her own consulting company, and they're one of the few companies that do, help towns do master plans. They have a lot of experience doing master plans.
Okay.
So what she does, and it's not just her, it's a team of, she brought bringing a team of people, you know, industry transportation expert, someone who is expert at looking through all of the demographics. So if she comes, she's not, you know, she's, she's just part of the people who were involved in the book. So what, what they do is they have a lot of, first of all, there's a certain legal requirements based on state law that has to be in the, in the plan. And then second, the plan has to really be something that's going to be usable and really reflect what town should be doing. And they have a lot of experience working with towns to create plans. They also have a lot of experience in understanding issues and recommendations. So they did, they, they, one part of the book is where the current state is. You know, it's kind of doing inventory of Walpole, gathering, you know, all the facts, and they interviewed town, town department heads. So there's a whole process that they went through doing that. So, so their mission was to write the actual plan. But, but their writing of it is based on input, particularly for the recommendations from the steering committee members. So they came up with a number of, you know, most of the recommendations they came up with as a straw list. And then we, the steering committee, we altered them, we changed them, we moved them around, we reworded them, some we voted no, some we voted yes.
Okay.
And what you have then is what came out of the steering committee. But that's the recognized way, all towns do it that way. Usually, town hires a consulting company to do it, because it's beyond the capabilities and the expertise of volunteers to do that.
So then.
So, so then what happened is that, that we did have the plan all written, and there were a lot of, some typos, a lot of changes. And for whatever reason, and I, I don't know what they are, we, we worked with her very hard to get those made. We often had dates when it would be made by, and then that didn't happen, and that's why it stretched out so long. If we knew, if we knew upfront what it was going to be, you know, it might have been different. But finally, and there was a lot of pushing, but finally, you know, and I, you know, I don't, like I said, I don't want to get into what she, what she's doing, because it's really what's most important, is finally, we got it. She made the changes. She was very responsive the last month or two, and went through and made the changes. And so now we have the report, so.
Done.
So, so the reason I'm pushing so hard is because all the work was done. The steering committee members, you know, people have gone away from thinking about this, and I want to bring them back into it. Because I think it's important that, that we and town officials hear from them as part of it, because don't, don't think that this was just a rubber stamp by the, the steering committee. There was a lot of debate, a lot of discussion, and a lot of rewording of things and changing things. So, so that, that was the, what the steering committee brought to the process. So.
This was started in October 2021, well, started up.
Okay. Yeah, it's not unusual for master plans to take, you know, a year and a half. A year is, is a fairly vast master plan process. A year and a half is more typical. And as I said, part of it was, that our biggest challenge was COVID.
Right.
Because a, the large part of it is getting public, public input. And I think we really did a good job doing that despite COVID.
I understand, I understand. But how lo, how long is it since this final copy till now?
Till now?
Yeah. How long has it been? Like, where the, where the steering committee has not met, you guys, you know, stopped your input. How long is that?
Oh, well, so that last meeting, and, and boy, I, I'd have to go back, and, you know, for some reason, I'm, I'm blanking on the, when the last
Give me a guess.
But, but it might be a couple of months. I'm trying to think here, yeah.
I would say June, do you think?
Might, might have been June.
When was the blackout period, we'll call it? That wasn't during COVID, that's just
No, no, it was, it was, it was, it was up to June.
Nothing to do with COVID.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think it was like the first of the year. I think we, we were thinking at one point we'd have this done by, by like January.
You should have it on, if you look it through, all you can do is look at
And I, I didn't bring my folder for the master plan meetings on my, on my, yeah, so. So, so it was longer, I mean, I mean, there's
Well, I'm just, I'm just, listen, if I'm a member, if I'm a member of this committee, and I've given a year and a half of attending meetings and all of this stuff, I mean, you know, it's only, and it's only been a couple of months since my last, I, I don't know how the stuff would fly out of my head, you know what I'm saying? Because I gave you a year and a half of my
So the meeting
So it was down to edits.
It was just down to edits at that point.
And that's why I think it is out of most people's minds.
It is.
The bulk, all of the votes, if you look, they, they all occurred in 2022.
Right, yeah, almost a year ago.
The, everything happened last, mostly last August, you know, summer, fall. So after, after, that's where we're then, the, the committee reviewed the, the report, the draft report, and people had a lot of changes to make. And there was a, you know, to go through some of the details, there was a miscue. For some reason, when they went to make a lot of the changes, some of the earlier changes went away. And I don't, I don't know what happened. That was part of her production, you know, so I can only, so, so there was a lot of, a lot of reading and looking and why weren't changes made and going back. So, and then there was some production problems on her, her part. She used Adobe InDesign to write it, and then they converted it into a PDF. And, and there were other, so, so that seemed to cause some production problems on her end. So, you know, like I said, if we, it isn't like, it wasn't like we didn't hear from her for five months. It was that there was this going back and forth, trying to get some things done.
We didn't receive anything from her for five months, as far as anything we could review or edit. So she was working on it on her end, but the committee got nothing.
Sounds like a winner.
No, we, we got, we, because people were reviewing, talking, when we went through
I'll find the emails. That's not what happened.
But I don't know how important that is. I think the
It's really important. Performance, we're paying in $137,500.
What's important is getting the master plan completed and getting it out to the town.
Yes, that is important.
That is to me the only important thing right now. And I don't, you know, there's no, it's not gonna pay to go back and figure out who did what or when or
No, but I feel that she's the one, so she did the nitty gritty on this. She's the one who had, like, the guidelines and put all the information in. And we did, the committee did a lot of work. I am not minimizing at all what the committee did. The committee did a ton of work. All the people who volunteered should definitely be recognized. The problem was, the problem is, she's the one who put it together.
Yeah.
So I feel like, as Phil worked his thingy off, I feel she should be, wait a minute, she should be the one, I feel she should be the one to present it, not Phil, not myself.
She's gonna present it via Zoom. I mean, it's not, it's not a question she won't present it.
So how about this? What if we, instead of the committee sending a letter?
For Paul's edification. They met on October 25th, '22, and that meeting was until April 4th, '23.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Yeah.
So what if the planning board sends her a request and tells her, we feel it's very important and would very much appreciate that she come in person, so that I just think it will have more impact and make more sense as far as the questioning, having been on Zoom with her in the past.
I can tell you, she was adamant that she cannot appear before, if, if you're gonna, if it's gonna, she's not gonna appear at any of our meetings the first Thursday of the month, until after the first of the year, and I don't know when. And, and, and I'm not defending that, I'm just looking at this from a practical matter. I, I, I've had several calls with her.
No, and my criticisms don't drop to you.
Yeah, no, 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 and I, I, I'm, I wanna see this happen as much as
The same circles going, and, you know, I know you're getting mad at me for going up a trowel.
No, no, but, but anyway, so I think the issue is whether the board, I, I would be promoting doing the Zoom meeting and, and moving forward. Certainly, the board can vote otherwise. But I just want to say, I think it is, I, I am really urging the board to go forward with a Zoom meeting, so we can move forward with this very important master plan that we owe our town.
Okay. Well, I'll see, I keep hearing how important it is. If it was that important, this one would have been done by now.
Yeah.
That's, that's all I can say. I'm not here to make up for somebody's piss, oops, another word I can't say, but the five Ps, all right? We all know what those are. Well, it's after night.
No, no, just keep going, no.
But my point is, it's all of a sudden, it becomes us to bail someone else out. No, I'm not, we are bailing.
If I could please, we're not, we're not bailing out anyone.
We're not? Okay, then why, why did, why are you asking us to just do her on Zoom in a five-minute dead period? That's bailing out, Phil.
Well.
I don't know what else you'd call it. And without seeing the, what's been discussed there, I don't even know what this means. I have no idea, because your discussions are very important to what's in here.
Well, we, I, I
Well, what you have in your meeting notes will tell you, you know, who felt what, but we don't have that either.
So the only meeting notes you're missing is gonna be the last meeting.
No, 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 you go online. There's nothing online.
Okay, well, let me
May 20, 2022.
Okay, let me check that with Patrick, because all the minutes were approved except for the last ones. And I, I discovered that I could actually approve them myself without a committee vote, based on mass law. When there's no extra, when there's no last, when there's no other meeting, the committee chair can approve them. So I talked to Patrick about that, and then we were thinking, so, so, but let me, let me, yeah, so that's what we're just, we're just missing the last minute, minutes of the last meeting, because there was no meeting subsequent to that to approve them. But I can approve them, and all we did was take a vote at that meeting.
I didn't say the last. I have, from May
Yeah, so that, those, those meeting minutes should be out there, because we, we actually voted on all of them at our last meeting. So I will find out about that, Jack. If they're not there, my apologies.
Well, they need to be up there.
Yeah.
I, I think, I think we should find out if she's been paid or not, too.
Should find out what?
If she's been paid or not. Full, in full.
Who, who approves her payments? That's one thing I never found out.
Um, I don't know. You'd have to check with, I think, Jim Johnson.
How would he approve something that's up to the committee? How would he know what's going on? Someone on the committee. I've been on building committees since, since 1988, and everything had to come through us, for us to say, yes, this is good, or no. How could she get paid without you guys discussing it?
It never came up to, to, no one ever mentioned it to me or
We'll have to find out where she is in life. But I'll find that out too, so.
All right, so it's, it's August. So I would like to propose that we do reach out as a planning board and tell her that we very much appreciate that she has a busy schedule, but we would like her to come in person, despite her conversation with Phil, if she could make any adjustments to her schedule, we would appreciate it, so we can put this to rest. And let's revisit this when she comes back with her response. If we have to schedule it Zoom, so be it, but I think we should try, as a planning board, to tell her how important we feel it is that she come in person.
And then you'd be open to a Zoom meeting?
No.
Well, then we'll discuss it.
I'm not doing Zoom.
No, I was just asking Kate.
News, okay.
Then we'll, we'll see what she says and we'll discuss it, because
Well, you write nice letters. You know, my letter would be, if you don't show up, you're not getting the rest of your money.
Kate, write it, write it my way, please.
Well, that's the way you do it in my business. Show, you get nothing, because that's the only way. We just talked about, you just went on about plowing.
In a nice way, I would find them, not in a mean way. So that's all.
There are nice finds, okay.
All right, that's my suggestion. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it, but I just, I feel strongly about this.
Yeah, and, and you know how I feel strongly about it.
Yep.
All right. Do you want that? You doing that as emotion there?
That's emotion.
Okay.
I'll second it, for discussion.
You did it again, please.
She didn't write it down.
I can't rewrite.
She, she said it, when I said, John, show up for no money.
To submit a letter and tell her as a planning board. Thank you, Kate, go right for it.
As a planning board, and tell her, we appreciate that she's done, possibly schedule another meeting.
Not possibly. We would very much appreciate it if she would come in person for her last review.
And are you gonna specify the meetings that we meet on as her options?
Kate, Kate, here's the thing, I would say, it, it has been asked by the board that it, she is strongly, strongly recommending, we, we are strongly recommending that she appears in front of this board, strongly recommending.
Is the board, is the board open to meeting on a non-scheduled night? Because that's, that's one of the issues.
Okay, so have you touched, Jack?
Okay, so, yeah.
So I'm gonna interrupt my life for someone we're paying 160 grand to, because she just doesn't want to come here. I'm not, no, 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 not me.
But, but I think that needs to be made plain in the letter. That's all I'm trying, if you, of what days you're looking for her to pick when she comes.
First and third of the month.
Yeah. So again, all I can say is, but, but let's write the letter and see what happens.
That's a nice boss. My boss said, just do it or you go home.
Well, Mark brought his pillow. Let's move this along, fam.
Motion on the floor with a second.
Yep, second. Okay. If all is in favor, unless anybody wants to add, all is in favor?
Aye.
Post?
Staying.
Staying, okay. 401. Moving on, but question, Phil, this has nothing, I'm not picking. Did, did they, is this what they do for all master plans?
The format?
No, not the, I, format I understand, just the size. Normally, you see a, a book eight and a half by 11.
I, I don't know how it got to this size. Yeah. At the time it got here, it wasn't gonna change easily, that's, okay.
I'm just curious.
The whole, the whole process that they did.
Not saying it's bad or good, it's just
I think it's partly because of the maps.
Okay, it's an unusual size, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, it is unusual. Yeah, there was, there was a lot of discussion about the maps.
Oh, okay.
That are in there, yeah.
Okay, all right.
So our, our maps tend to be more vertical, so.
Yeah, because they're all copy, I can leave in the office, I don't have, I don't have
You can have mine, because I have one.
You got this one?
Yes.
How do you know?
I received it digitally, and I printed it.
Are you sure?
Yes.
And Patrick may have others.
He only had one.
Oh, okay.
I just don't have any, if someone came in.
Yeah, I, I asked her to get the printed copies for this meeting, and I think she might hold back before she makes more to make sure there's no changes or anything.
Okay, I just, I didn't want anybody to come in to look at it.
Yeah, yeah, no, thank you, though.
Thank you, thank you, Kate.
I think per the contract, we get, I think, 30 copies. I can't look at what now. Yeah, 30 printed copies.
Of the draft or of the finish?
Of the final report, yeah. I wanted the board to have printed copies, so they could
Is this the final, is this the very final?
Well, this, this is the final, unless somebody saw something that needed to be changed. Yeah, I mean, it's gone through a lot of, a lot of revisions.
It's, where you're comfortable.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's really a draft, which could become the final. That's probably a better way. You're still allowed to make changes.
Yeah, I, I will say that, that there were a lot of changes submitted to her, and so over that, those months, there was a lot of emails going back and forth to, to fix things. So it wasn't, it wasn't that nothing was happening.
Well, then, Jack, you know what, that may tell you something, though. So if this is a, not considered the final version and she's open to make
Well, I, I don't want to say, I don't want to put that words in her mouth. Yeah, this is, yeah. I think something would have to really be drawn, you know, something, we found a real
Wait a minute. We're paying for us. We find something wrong, stop, not changing it. Pay the way it goes. We find something we want it in, it gets in. Or we don't want it in, it gets out.
I didn't
Yeah, I'm just, I'm, yeah, you, you're just kind of, you're just unclear in your, your, I'm saying is that if this is not the, if this is the final version
This is the final version.
Final version.
This is the final version.
Okay.
Yeah. This is the final version.
Well, is the, when was this?
Okay, that's, yeah, that's what I meant, that's, thank you, Jack. But that just tells you
Accepted at the June meeting. Yeah, the, the steering committee voted
She should be, she should be bringing up
And voted to accept this version.
That's why we keep getting the Zoom.
In this past June?
In June, this past June.
I'm just thinking, I was just noticing the front cover, the planning board members, and it still has Sarah here, and it doesn't have Paul. I don't know what it would be proper on that. I was just curious. I suppose Sarah was here for the majority.
Yeah, sometimes they put
I don't know if that's
Sometimes people put both, both the members, because it spans terms, yeah.
Well, whether it was before Paul was becoming a member, that was issued, so
Yeah, but it's all, should be there, it's
Yeah, and, and so that's something we can do, yeah.
All right, moving on. I hope I'm not the last item, that's all I see left. MBTA, Phil?
Yeah, so I've been talking to Patrick, and, and as, as everyone knows, you know, the, the MBTA law passed, Walpole has to respond to it. We have by the end of December 2024, to show how we will comply with being an MBA, yeah, MBTA city. Patrick sent you that, the, the handout, which he did a very good job analyzing the law. He's been looking at ways in which Walpole can comply with it. So, so the law specifies, you know, what density and how many housing units Walpole has to have. Not housing units, but, but our zoning has to allow for the building of that many housing units. It doesn't mean that they would ever be built. But, but the, the town has great latitude on how we change our zoning bylaws, or how we change our, our, our planning in order to get there. So that, so that's where we come in, and where the, the town comes in. So Patrick has been doing a lot of work. He's in a cohort of towns, like, like towns, like size, working, they're each working individually on their town, but it's good to have that, you know, spreading that information. And he's, he's looking at ways to propose on how we can comply. So it will require some zoning bylaw changes, and if you look at where we are, we will have two town meetings in order to make those changes, the spring and the fall of 2024. So he's, he's trying to be out in front of this, so I want to, want to thank him for that. I think that's really, has been very helpful. He presented to the select board on, on proposals, and so we need to have him, us, to present those to us. So I was, I was looking for him to present to our board his proposals, so we can start in that discussion, and, and understand exactly, maybe, you know, he'll give an overview of the law to get a better sense of what is required of, of us. And, and then also some of his thinking on, on what we can do, and he's looking for input. I think, I'm sure the select board gave input as well. So, so if we could have that meeting, and I was proposing a meeting in September.
He's already coming.
Coming, coming, okay. I, I think he did tell me that, yeah. So, so actually, the reason I put it on the agenda was to, to set, to make sure we get him on the agenda for a meeting, so I'm happy with that.
Can I have a question on that?
Yeah.
Um, that's the 21st of September, and our appointment starts at 7:01, 7:05, 7:06, 7:07, 7:10, and 8:30, and I'm not sure if you want to come in a few minutes early to get the MBTA out, like, so he's not sitting here all night?
It'd be good to have him go early, so he doesn't have to sit through a long
Some, it's gonna get backed up somewhere.
Yeah.
Sorry. Not really.
You gotta be here, so what do you care?
I don't, 6:45?
But no, it would, it would be, it would be, you know, a, a nice thing to
I don't know, the board can do 6:45.
Yeah, if we could, if we could do him first.
Yeah, we'll do him. Anybody have an issue with 6:45?
On the 21st? No.
Yeah.
No issue. I can make, I can make it.
Do anything special for that?
What?
Do we have to do anything?
No, we'll just schedule
Do I post it?
Yeah, we'll post it, that, so he gets his 15 minutes of fame before we start.
That'd be greatly appreciated, yeah.
I knew you're here for something, Mark. I couldn't figure out what. Stone walls?
No, 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 for that, could, could I just
Go ahead, yeah, yeah. I'm trying to figure out, oh, wait a minute, stone walls? I thought you were gonna jump up and help us.
No, 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 so, I, I just came in because the state is really pushing this whole MBTA communities thing, and, and from my perspective, it's sort of the 40B Phase 2. So they've taken a look at the train station and said, we're gonna push housing, multifamily housing into certain zones within towns like Walpole that have a train station. They're starting to push really hard with some towns, like Westwood, who didn't file a plan, and Holyoke, I think was another town that thought they were, has been saying they're not And, uh, Holyoke, I think was another town that thought they were, has been saying they're not going to do this. And the state is sort of already threatening grant money and all that. So I, I think the state's going to put a lot more pressure on month by month by month as we move toward that deadline in 2024. So I really wanted to come in because Patrick, Patrick gave us an update on August 1st, maybe August 2nd, I don't remember the date. And, you know, it, it's clearly a planning board thing from my point of view, but as a member of the select board, if there's anything we can do to help, if you need help from us, if you want us to do something, someone will have to sponsor an article for a town meeting. I assume that will be you, but it could be us if you'd rather see that. So I'm just here to say, the state's pushing hard, we understand it, would like to help if you'd like the help. And that's really the reason I came tonight. So just let me or let the board know. And, you know, the board sort of, i- if you talk to the other members, and we talked about this on TV, we, we get it that the state's pushing, we understand what it is. And, you know, we don't want to be in violation, we'd like to do the best job we can for Walpole within sort of the 40B Version Two guidelines that we're getting. So that, that's really all I wanted to say, so thank you.
And maybe it could be a joint meeting or something, a work meeting or something.
Whatever makes the most sense, a joint meeting would be great if, you know, if you wanted to.
Well, I'll give you my opinion, I'm always shy about it, but you guys got all the resources, we don't. This is it. I mean, and we, you know, as much as Patrick is, you know, will help, but Jim says do something, he's got to do it. You've got Kyle, we don't have anybody, Mark, as you understand, and it's a lot easier. The other thing I see with this more than anything is a lot of this, watch my mouth, will happen during the day, meaning, and I'm sure you're going to have a lot more contacts, or at least Jim would, with, you know, the state reps and everything. To me, this is more than just, this isn't a planning exercise, this is a political thing that you guys, especially with Jim down there, have the, you know, workings. We're just sitting here on every other Thursday. And I think for something like that, I'm not sure even what, how it's going about. You just told us stuff that we wouldn't necessarily know, meaning about suing and stuff. And the other thing is, you have people that can react. And you guys would know ahead of time, we just sit here and we get fed. That's where I'm looking at it, because this is way more than just having a little article in front of town meeting and say, hey, this is good. Cause I think, and you probably guys know better than us, is this is going to be a big political back and forth, up and down and da-da-da-da. That's my view right now, because it's just so, the pushback.
And, and that's why I'm here. So, and that, part of this is really a zoning specific thing, like are the recommendations that Patrick's got in the document right now, the way to go? And I look at it and I go, it looks good, but I don't know. And, and so I see there's really two parts. There's a zoning piece, is it practical to do it the way that, you know, Patrick's got in the plan and, you know, what other towns are doing? And I'd really look to you guys for that expertise on, does that make sense? All the other stuff, we're happy to play whatever role you'd like and we'd like to work with you.
Yeah, my view is if, you know, you guys would have to take it, and then when it comes down, when you finally get it all ironed out with Beacon Hill and everything else, then it becomes, we can look at it as a zoning thing, not whether we sponsor or not, we can talk about that, but just how we know the book. But not only us, but you have Jim Crowley there, he's a very key piece in this, because he's the one that has some. He, I'll tell you, Mark, in my opinion, he's the one that you always should go first, because he interprets it.
Sure.
So if you think it's one thing, we think it's one thing, and Jim thinks another, it ain't working.
Yeah, yeah. So I do want to say, the, the responsibility of planning is, is the planning board. So we need to, we need to be not looking just narrowly at bylaw changes, zoning bylaw changes, but also at, how do we want to plan the town?
No, we, that's not our charge, Phil. Mass General Law is very clear, planning board just does subdivisions. There's nothing that says, planning, planning board is a, a misnomer of a name, so.
It's actually, even in our own description, if you look online.
I looked at it on Town Charter, what we do, and we're supposed to do subdivisions.
Well, we have, we have a write-up, a description of what the planning board does, it's not a legal document, but.
So I, I guess the question is, if you want to give us some more feedback, you know, it would be great for you to look at what he's got and see where he's standing.
That's why we're going to have.
And I think we should work together. I think we should work together.
Joint meeting, yeah, so whether we need a joint meeting or figure out how to work together, I'm, I'm happy to be the liaison or, you know, I know Ben is interested. So we'll, we'll work with you in any way that makes the most sense.
Yeah, it's like, unless you can tell Mr. Johnson anytime we call for anybody, they, they're, we're first and he's second.
We'll, we'll figure out how to do it.
No, but you're better off, if it's, you guys got the, the juice for all these people, and they know it too. I mean, if you're Kyle, you're going to answer to Mr. Johnson first.
Yep.
Of course he would. And he, you know, he's kind of our, we look at these guys as, like Kyle especially, as your consultant, so to speak. So he's got his job to do, but that's coming first and then we're, when he gets to it, not that he doesn't get to it, but it's, it's tough for us. And five members and one secretary, that's our.
No, and I understand, it's, and you're a nighttime board, you know, kind of like we are, but.
Yeah. But you have the.
I, I understand, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm here to say, we want to work with you in whatever makes the most sense, so. I'll, you know, I'll, I'll talk to Jim tomorrow and.
I think what you find is you're, you're going to go through a lot of this, would come back and forth, talking to state reps and Jim and all that, before everybody figures out what's going on.
They're pretty far along, I mean, I, they, they seem like they have a pretty good understanding of what the rules are going to be for MBTA communities. And so, you know, if you can take a look at that, I, I think you mentioned September.
Yeah, 21st, yep.
Yep, which would be great. And then, you know, we'll, you know, if you sort of bless or come up with issues that need to be addressed, I'll work with Jim to keep pushing it along and let the select board help out, so, thank you.
Yeah, well, Mark, if I know you're here for that, I would have moved it ahead of time. I thought, I really thought it might be the stone wall, then it's like, no.
No, no, I was here for the, when we had the meeting, I, I mentioned that I was going to come when you guys addressed it, just to. So personally say, I'm invested in this, would like to help move it along, so.
So, I got to ask you.
Okay, thank you.
You, no, there's this question. Who's your consultant on this?
Well, you know who the consultant is, the Barrett Group.
Oh, dude. Can she show up? Can you tell her, like, this is your meeting, but she shows up for ours?
Thanks again.
Thank you for staying.
Thank you for staying, yeah.
Yeah, fortunately, you're lucky it wasn't a week, a month from now, Mark. If I didn't know, it would be like 11, so.
No problem.
All right, bye, Mark.
Thanks, thank you, Mark.
Okay. We're done? Done. All right. Got to get a lot of sleep for the 21st.
Let's stop some caffeine.
Yeah.
We'll bring some pillows.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.